Okay, okay. Alright, so it's eight thirty I guess we can get started. Welcome everyone thanks for coming so we're like um I'm not we did start but I'm not sure I didn't pick on the area but they're not shooting comments so. Um I'll just turn it over to Susan for your any remarks actually. Oh first I should say that Mike is making an audio recording of the meeting and W C T V is making is also recording the meeting.
And I.
And sorry and Michelle Louise is making an audio recording, thank you.
Welcome everyone, um this is my first budget workshop all day in Wayham so bear with me. Gonna just try to ride the wave and see how it goes, um what what we're trying to do this year is to limit the time we spend so it's not an all day project. People are gonna lose, um so we're not gonna have the principals do slides, they're gonna have the bodies of what the codes budgets are. Um a back of information, they're gonna give you comparisons and justifications from current year to what their requested budget is for next year. Um they've got handouts, they've got lots of information to share, so hopefully we can move it along. And then yeah, um the buyers have a copy of every department's request summarized and compared to the previous year. We can kind of see where um where they're spending whether or not and then at the end I think Kim and I will work with some of the paperwork that's looking for. Which analyzes percentages in a mouse that we're looking for, so with that being said I'll turn it over to Nicole at high school.
Thanks, Scott Palladino, principal of high school, thank you all for being here this morning. So I have some paperwork that I think I'll hand out first and then certainly answer any questions. I I think the documents in the binder may be difficult to attribute to what has been spent and what hasn't been spent for a couple of reasons. One, I have never served as principal and not had my purse full of this frozen, so it's sometimes difficult to say is that money used properly or not? So just please bear with me with that and I'll try and explain as we go through. The other piece is there have been some money that's been moved through um free cash, so we'll I'll try and explain some of that as to why things are the way they are. But please.
Can I just, you said about being frozen right now?
No, 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 in the past, it's hard to forecast because sometimes to say whether money is being used sometimes is tough because sometimes the accounts are frozen. So it's tough to kind of look back and say, okay, that money was spent or wasn't spent, um because sometimes the accounts do get frozen and and it's happened at different times. And it's all for budgetary purposes, it's not like it's not being used appropriately. So the uh I do have dual the enrollment data that I want to share with you on the first slide, which is our F Y nineteen and twenty enrollment data. And this has our current enrollment, share with everyone. Our current enrollment is six hundred and eleven students and that this will be passed out to you. Our special education students, we have a hundred and forty six special education students, which comprises twenty four percent of our student enrollment. We also have nine students in the cooperative program, which is a very small program with one teacher, I'll identify that in a few minutes. Our projected enrollment based on the current seventh grade size and matriculation through the grade levels is six hundred and twenty one students. Our projected special education students by grade level is a hundred and sixty two students, which would complete which would be sixty two percent of our population will be specialized by next year. And then the nine co-op students, that number would stay consistent, so that doesn't change. On the backside of this, just for your viewing, I do have the classes that we offer and the average class size. And um and there's also the middle number is the number of sections that we have per class. So that's um you know just again for your information, some classes we have five, six sections, some you may only have one. I I do also want to uh just let you know that above eight years ago, our teachers all agreed to teach one extra course in the uh in their schedule. So what it allowed us to do is allow us to have uh one extra class each teacher would teach that would bring down their class size quite a bit. But their case load would stay the same, so if they taught a hundred students over five classes, the average class size was twenty, obviously I'm doing this with simple math. Um i- i- if we had six classes, which they now teach, obviously it would be sixteen students in each class, so it brings down the class size um by them picking up the other class. The next count over has the same exact schedules as us and their teachers teach five classes, so their class sizes obviously are a little higher. So it doesn't allow for a lot of that differentiation to occur in the classroom. I do have, if you're interested, please take one, this is our list of staffing, current staffing levels at the high school. I broke it down by department, um so you have that, this includes everyone from the cafeteria workers to power professionals, custodians, anyone that's in the building. That's working for the district at the high school is listed here. For your information, there are sixty two point six seven what we call F T Es and these are full-time equivalent teachers. Sixty two point six seven F T Es, okay, that doesn't include administration, these are people that are actually teaching students, okay, sixty two point six seven.
Scott, is that is that a forty hour week?
That that would be in F T E, yes, thank you, in F uh uh F T E of one is one person working full time, forty hours, correct. Okay, so I'll answer any questions on that paperwork as you have it, but I'll continue to move on, try and stay on time. So staffing needs, uh we from a teaching standpoint, we're in pretty good shape and I want to thank the district for the support we've had in that. We've had the eighth grade students coming over this year and our staffing level i- is really, we're in a good place right now for staffing. We're just, we don't have too many, we don't have too few, we're in a really good place. We will need one more specialized teacher that you'll hear uh during a special education presentation later on this morning, but our needs really are threefold. And I'm gonna just pass this out, these are the staffing needs for Wayham High School. And we have three needs, one is uh we really need to have a full-time person in charge of the special education department. Uh it's gonna be more than one quarter of our population and yet the person who oversees the special education uh population right now has teaching responsibilities. So we're hoping to uh create an assistant principal in charge of special education. Uh it's difficult for this person to have oversight of this department, it is the largest department and also has the largest number of teachers to evaluate. Moving on, we would like to have a guidance director, uh this is the only department that doesn't have a direct supervisor to oversee the day-to-day activities. I feel, this is my philosophy, the guidance department should be the nearest center of the high school and really should everything should kind of work out from there. Um that's my philosophy, we have a very young guidance staff and and they need direction. So the last part is the full-time athletic director, uh this position was brought down to part-time during tough economic times, this in this case in F Y thirteen, I know it's been tough for a few years. The plan was for this to be a one-year remedy, it has now been six years, the position has oversight of twenty athletic programs, coaches, budgeting, scheduling, field and gym usage. Currently we have someone who does this, I believe it's a twenty hours a week is what they're earmarked for, so it's uh it's difficult because like a day like today. You're stacking phone calls right now regarding the weather and and technically this person doesn't have to come in until you know ten thirty, eleven o'clock. Uh so it's it's difficult to get things answered in timely fashion and he and he does a wonderful job and we're very grateful for the job he's he's done in that position and I I hope we are in a position to make that full-time. So those are the the staffing requests that have gone in.
Scott, can I, um the assistant principal, what's what's the F T E now, like is it a half F T E and you wish it and you want the other half?
So she she's a point three three teacher and a point six seven department head. So she's a she's a one point oh, but she has two roles, one is she's in the classroom for thirty three percent of the day and then sixty seven percent of the day she's in charge of the department.
Yeah. So you're looking to do what then?
To elevate that to an assistant principal's job.
And and so it's one point oh, you're you're looking to add another point five or another one point oh F T E?
So we have to cover the point three three teacher and elevate that to a one point oh assistant principal, which would also, because she'd be working more days, there'd be a little bit of a cost associated with that as well. So there'd be the cost of covering the classes, so really to put it in math, it'd probably equate to a little point five F T E teacher.
A point five.
Financially speaking, financially speaking.
And then they pull prime athletic, you're looking to pull about another point five is that?
Another point five, exactly. And that's a a little bit different structure in the contract, it wouldn't be, because it's more of a school year position, it wouldn't be uh as costly. Because there's really not a lot of work that goes on in the summertime, most of the scheduling and the ordering occurs uh in the spring for the fall, so the summers. Traditionally athletic directors don't work more than a few days in the summer.
On the athletic director, that's something that the athletic department can't cover on a part-time basis?
It's very difficult uh to cover that, there's a lot of oversight that goes in, there's there's twenty programs, but there's you know like you know fifty teams, you know, so there's a lot, there's three seasons, there's multiple levels of O C J V freshman. In some cases there's freshmen, um there's a lot of oversight of coaches, ordering, scheduling, the fall and the spring are very diff, actually all four, all three seasons are difficult with the weather because there's so many adjustments that have to be made. Uh and you really need to be there to make those adjustments, you know, in the in the fall and the spring it's usually rain, obviously in the winter it's snow. Um you know, you don't want games occurring when there's snowstorm coming in, even though maybe we had school but the game's not till seven or eight o'clock, you know, he needs to be available or she needs to be available to make those decisions.
When you say athletic department, is it's just that one person?
That was my next question, how many people are in your athletic department?
Well, in charge is just a part-time athletic director, okay, but as far as in the department, there's over fifty coaches.
Alright.
Um this is Mr. Roberts, he's he's been half-time for six years, I didn't know that.
Right. Correct. Um actually I think the first year uh we we put Mr. Rumble in charge, we had a transition, I think Steve did the first year and Mr. Roberts been this since then.
I see him, he's there at night at a lot of the games and everything sure.
He, I'm sure if we were to calculate, he puts in more than twenty hours a week, but it's it's really, it's getting to be a full-time job, just just in the nature of the position, it's really changed over the years.
Yeah.
Just an investment in the program, I don't know how somebody at a point five can do what we need them to do to just organize and support our coaching staff and do the job that we need them to do, we're on limited resources. I hands down think it's a phenomenal idea, we want to invest in these programs, we have very limited equipment, very limited field, so we've really gotta be efficient. And we can't be efficient when there's not even one person who can spend forty hours in a week for all of these different programs. Great examples, you know, when we we don't have time, he's so busy trying to take care of the fields and the needs of the current sport that we're not planning ahead for the next season and we want to go, alright, why do we keep having losing seasons? Why do our athletes feel like they're not getting support? This is this is huge, especially at a high school level, I I'm just, I'm thrilled that this is in your across.
Thank you and uh you know it's it's needed, uh we've, I I really honestly thought it was gonna be a one-year situation and you've all been involved in budget cycle for many years. It's just one of those situations where we we need to get it back, but it's never been the right time, I'm really hoping this is the right time to get it back to where it once was, thank you, please.
Question, you have two people in guidance, how many students are assigned to each person?
So there are uh we'll soon to have three, um there there was a resignation, there'll be three starting next Tuesday. But to answer your question, there are six hundred students in the high school, so a caseload of two hundred is pretty much the standard for guidance throughout Massachusetts.
And they don't have anyone?
Not a direct supervisor, correct, correct.
Where they can.
Well, we haven't had a director, no, quite a while.
No, no, we haven't had a direct guidance since I was in the classroom many, many years ago.
This is a staple at most high schools.
It it is, it is, it's it's definitely needed and uh again I hope that can be seen as well.
You know, and I would share, uh one of the reasons why we were able to add the third guidance council is because of our global education students that we brought in with the money from global ed. Because of that, one of the guidance people also has duties assigned to the global education, which are um.
I'm not supposed to roll in itself if you think that.
It is.
Because everything goes to the government, the federal government, and you have to make sure that it's impeccable. But because of our budget situation, we needed that position and we anticipate being able to continue it because we've had some enrollments from global ed for next year already. But I would say that there are other places in the budget offsetting the guidance department.
Thank you. So I'll just move on uh with the budget drivers for the F Y twenty budget, uh obviously the eighth grade students coming in has been awesome and I love it, but we needed a little bit of support for that. It has increased our enrollment by forty percent, which was needed, um and it's been a great transition. I mentioned the highest specialized population as a driving factor, the aging building, uh our building is coming up on thirty years old, I know it's hard to believe, uh I I feel like it was yesterday it was brand new. Um but it it will be the oldest building in the district uh eventually and hopefully uh soon, alright? So uh I'm looking forward to being able to say that uh in the future. And uh so we have currently more than sixteen, by the time of this report, we had sixteen classrooms that need age factor repairs. And this doesn't include routine maintenance that needs to be done throughout the year. We have a a strong need for textbooks, we have eleven courses utilizing textbooks with copyright dates before two thousand and many more courses are running with no textbooks. So those are kind of the drivers for F Y twenty. My priorities are always about improving student learning and improving the learning environment and a lot of that has to do with uh making sure the classrooms are appropriate for learning in regards to their environment. I I mentioned the staffing needs already and uh I just wanna, I hope that we can reestablish line items um that are not there right now and I'll I'll talk about those uh coming up in a second. So I'll move on to the budget, I know you all have this and.
Scott, Susan.
Oh Mike, I'm sorry.
It's okay, uh what classes don't have textbooks?
Well, the textbook, I've got a whole list I'd be glad to share with you, uh I know the textbooks that we're, the class that we're addressing right now is foreign language, their textbooks are outdated. Uh off the top of my head, um I I'd I'd rather get your list than say, uh these are the ones, because I know I'll I'll miss a few, mostly electives in nature that don't have textbooks. Um so I'd rather get, I'd rather go back and I have the list on spreadsheet, I'd rather get you that and say, hey, here are the classes. But again, they're not like an English class, it's not a math class, I want to assure you, but there is, it's still difficult, um you know, when you're when you're running um courses and you and you just don't have those electives. I want to say like a psychology course, there's not a textbook for, things like that, but uh I have a full list with copyrighted, the copyright dates of every textbook we have in the school, every class that doesn't have one.
You send it to all of us?
I can, I'll send it to Super Dennis, she'll send it up to you, absolutely.
And um one thing, I don't know if everyone else is seeing it, but I'm seeing with the with the with the new school we're trying to get through, that people keep saying over and over that, you know, we don't do a good job of maintaining the schools we have. I don't ever want to hear that again, so so what 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 do you need?
I I can get to that on on my page two of the of the uh.
Because I I know I know we've made a lot of improvements lately, you know, especially the new roof at the at the high school um and such, but I wanted, I want to know from you what you need so that we can make, I'm sure it's a priority.
I think what you said and and you always was in my school council meeting this morning and I and I went through the budget with them uh one time and I said, you notice I'm not mentioning anything about the roof?
Right.
Because we fixed the roof appropriately and I haven't had to have anything listed as a as a line item underneath one of these budgets um for five years.
Right, and you've been very frugal in the past and then it became Swiss cheese and then a real problem, I don't want that to happen again, so as a school committee, I want to be proactive on a lot of these things.
Right, and and I'll get to the maintenance, I think the maintenance money is so important to be there and be budgeted uh so that we can fix things and um you know it's it's and I think hopefully we get to a point. Um where we can be preventative in nature and and do that preventative maintenance ahead of time, because there's a saying, for every dollar you spend in preventative maintenance is two dollars you save down the road. And um we're just not there yet, again, no one's fault, but uh I I think I might answer your question in a few minutes and if not, we'll we'll come back to it, is that okay?
Sure.
Alright, so I'd like, I I think these can be confusing and um you know, I'd like to go through if if appropriate and if I have the time, each line item and just kind of tell you what's spent out of there and and then answer any questions and any, is that okay? So athletic contracted services, this is for our athletic training, we're required to have an athletic trainer, um that is the salary we pay. South Coast hospitals pretty much matches that salary for the person that's on site, um they work about thirty hours during the season at Wayham High School. And this could be anywhere from, you know, seven days a week if needed. The athletic supplies and materials, this this is uh uniforms for fall, winter and spring, um these are required for students to participate. These would also be the supplies that are needed year in and year out, there are some supplies that you would deem kind of consumable that you need to replace every year for sporting uh teams. But there are other supplies obviously that you can use for multiple years, uh an example might be a baseball bat that's used multiple seasons. Athletic other expenditure, this is a real simple account, this is officials and transportation for all three sports. So those are the athletic service line items, I if you want, I can pause on each heading or just keep going.
Well, all I would say, you already pointed this out to me, is that um so under uniforms, you're asking for twenty eight thousand, hot from forty eight hundred, which is down from thirty five thousand, how many years ago?
Uh F Y twelve.
So in twenty seven, twen- uh seventeen eighteen, we spent two thousand?
In, so the the athle- in the athletic supplies, materials, uh in F Y uh twelve and thirteen, we had thirty five thousand dollars in the account.
And how do you account for going from thirty nine five to sixty five three on other expenditures?
On F Y fourteen, we had fifty one thousand eight hundred and thirty nine dollars in that account. The cost of transportation has gone up drastically since F Y fourteen and we're in a position now where we have to outsource many of the sports buses. Um just, you know, because of the the uh the number of trips that we have to have for sporting events and it's not fair to think that the the district can cover all of those. Especially if they're three thirty games and they still have an elementary run that they have to make for the district, so it's uh we're forced to outsource, which as my athletic director tells me, sometimes it costs me three times as much to go out outsourcing this. And I said, Ed, there's not much we can do, um kids have to get home from school, that's the first priority, if they can do the the sports runs, that's great, obviously we would rather keep them in-house. But sometimes we have to go with the outside companies, so it's it's a, the transportation is is really the biggest cost. The officials uh in that timeframe have seen an average of ten dollars per official per game, uh a pay raise uh since F Y fourteen. Traditionally the M I A gives uh two dollar a year rates uh for their officials and that's just, you know, cost of living, gas, et cetera.
So how do you go from, say forty thousand to sixty five thousand?
Again, in F Y four, I'm sorry?
You've got to buy. Not going back five years, but.
It's been underfunded and it's been in the red for for many years, uh we've had to find other accounts to offset the cost of transportation of officials. I agree, uh you know, it's it's like what a forty percent increase in in the budget, I agree, it's it's glaring. Uh I'm I'm just trying to get it to where it needs to be, so that it's a realistic number that we can say, this is what it costs to transport kids for sports for three seasons.
So you're going to reduce other budget lines to fit for this?
I've reduced a few, but it's not uh it's, I can tell you, it's, you know, it's very difficult because these have always, you know, there's been money taken out year in and year out of these accounts.
I think one of the biggest concerns is we have so many departments, athletics being one of them, that we're seriously underfunded, we're doing a disservice to our school, our town and our kids. And you've got a program of athletes that has sixty people participating and you don't have the money or resources to have a freshman team. So now all of a sudden you have eighteen on one and, you know, twenty eight to thirty on another, those kids aren't getting playing time, we're not investing in the program. We're basically saying, well, we know you want to play, but we don't have the resources to give you what you really need. And I think that's not just in one program, that's in several of them, and I think with the increase having the eighth graders, it's gonna be amazing, the talent and resources need to be there to support the additional athletes that can come from this too. Last year, I can count at least three programs right offhand that didn't have what they needed, you know, when we have, we have to cancel a J V game because we can't send the J V to to the school where they need to play. Sorry girls, you're not gonna play and you don't have room on the bus, you know, what does that say to our kids? I I think this is huge, we're underfunding and we've been band-aiding for I don't know how many years.
But just for full disclosure, that wasn't a budget reason that the bus wasn't.
Well, no, but I mean.
I want to say, we canceled the girl's softball game because of the budget.
Well, no, but there were multiple things, when you say, okay, we have X number of dollars to spend when we're making the schedule, you know, you have to really look and see, okay, what's important? And all of a sudden you start prioritizing and it's no one's fault, the the money is not there and we have to support our athletes.
Yeah, and and there was some free cash that was put in this account as well, so it's it's difficult to really see exactly.
Scott, can I ask you a question about like if if you get uh charged fees and get fees in or grants in, is, are these figures net of any anticipated like fees you would charge or?
Charge like gate receipts and user fees.
Yeah, stuff like that.
So so that, believe it or not, this isn't even enough to run the spring sports, we have to use all that to offset the cost for the spring sports. Because there are fee, you know, this money runs out sometimes sometime in like the first or second week of spring sports. So what happens then is we have to use the revolving account, which as you identified, has money for user fees and gate receipts. So basically the football games, basketball games, hockey games, all that gate receipt goes into the revolving account and then we use that to offset the spring sports. Even then, we're we're still in the red, even then.
So and so in in reality then, these expenses are actually net of anticipated fees.
Right.
So you're not, we're not really getting the the big picture in the sense of of total expenditure, we're just getting a picture of the net.
Right. Right, and we do a uh every season, we do a end of the season report for the school committee that identifies all those costs you're you're talking about, the the money coming in through gate receipts, user fees. We even break it down, cost per student, so that the school committee and the and the public knows exactly what it costs for us to run each sport, um some sports, as as you all know, are more expensive than others. Um but we we try and get it down to the pen, we do get it down to the penny in regards to whatever they cost, but it's, and and that number, as you as you mentioned, the gate receipts and the and the user fees can fluctuate. For instance, we have Thanksgiving home this year, the game this year, so we'll have more gate receipts this year, assuming it's good weather, uh because of that. And then if we have a really strong basketball team that's going into the tournament, we'll have more people showing up. So it it's a, it's a moving number as far as what you're gonna get in for gate receipts and user fees can be the same way, because uh there are, um you know, there's a waiver, so you know, one year, we had one whole team, everyone was on a waiver. Um and then there's other years where you have a whole team, everyone's paying, so there's really, that number's moving, but I can assure you, once the spring sports, everything has been paid, all that money that comes in, which isn't a lot, is exhausted.
Would would you do me a favor, as you go, as you go through these line items?
Sure.
If there's any of these line items that like our our net of anticipated grants or fees, would you just point it out that, you know, like tell me that, okay, that's not a hundred percent of what we're spending, is that is equal to eighty percent because we reimbursed twenty percent in grants.
The the athletics would be the only ones that I'm aware of.
Athletic is the only only one that you're presenting that's like that.
Right, correct, so.
You made a good point about the waivers, when we're at, you know, seventy five percent free or reduced lunch, we're not getting those user fees and that's where it's a huge hit to some of the programs, because we're not getting that money and it's just the state of our community.
Right, and we're hoping, you know, with the eighth graders being in the building, we'll have more participation, which equates to more user fees, so from the business side, that's something we kind of think about.
Just just to clarify, uh you know, a premium reduced is is large, but it's not seventy five percent, is it? That was like fifty something?
Sixty.
Sixty, okay.
I was going by the number when they were presenting the bus information, it was rounded up to about that.
Okay, I just want to publicly make sure about, you know, that seventy five percent.
Okay, moving on, attendance, uh these numbers have stayed pretty consistent over the years, uh attendance supply, attendance travel, attendance travel, we do have to spend some time uh going to court for students that are not attending school. And uh so that's kind of where that travel money goes in. High building security, we've got a couple of projects we really need to tackle, uh you know, we have a security system that's in place, we have cameras, we're constantly needing to replace those cameras. I I have two cameras that we're currently using that were installed when the school was built, so certainly, you know, we've gotten some great use out of those two cameras. We want to replace some of the broken cameras, um the new I P cameras are phenomenal, we want to add some security cameras to the parking lot. And probably most importantly, we need to do some work on our outdoor parking lights, I know, you know, that's a a physical thing, but it's really a security thing to have those outdoor parking lights work. And currently the parking lot lights in the back do not work at this point in time and the front ones, every other one works, so we really need to to do some work with that. Um but actually, you know, this would be one, I I apologize, I said there were no other grants or programs, this would be one, I'm working with uh Eversource, I have a rebate, uh it's a thirty thousand dollar project. If we pay for fifteen, they'll pay for fifteen, so this would be one where uh Eversource will match the funds and uh for thirty thousand dollars, we could replace all the lights. Uh but there'd be fifteen thousand dollars that they would cover in a incentive program.
So which which um page are we on for that, for the cameras?
Um so that was the building security, that's about the six point down, it should still be on the same page, the first page.
Gotcha, alright, so sixty three hundred dollars, that's it?
No, the one above it.
Twenty seventy.
Oh, okay, got you, seventy, alright, yep, um so how how many cameras need replacing right now, how many don't work?
There's there's three that currently need to be replaced and there are the two in the back that are black and white that are very uh fuzzy and there's one more that I need to, that I have lines going through it that are difficult to see, so there's six in total.
So just a perfect example, I mean, I. So just a perfect example, I mean, I might be ahead of it, I want, I want to make sure.
We have been, in fairness, we have been ahead. I don't want you to think.
No, no, you're, I mean, you're here to ask for it, I mean, it's us to make sure you get it.
Right, no, we've been, we've been, I think, really good of replacing five or six cameras a year. This isn't, that, that amount has been in the budget straight through. Uh, it's the lights on the outside and the, um, you know, just, just getting some cameras on the parking lot is not, you know, it's an area we're starting to see.
Yeah, and the, the lighting, absolutely, I mean, come on.
So does this point seven include the fifteen thousand dollars for?
It, it does. It's, uh, fifteen for that, uh, eight for the cameras, and, and roughly four for the outside cameras.
One of the things that I would say about the security is, it's on a couple of different networks. So what we're looking at doing is bringing it into one network and then starting to add the IP cameras throughout the building. We're looking at what it's going to cost us to run the lines because that's a huge infrastructure, um, expense that we need to take care of. And then put the lines in. We're currently exploring, last year, we received quite a significant grant for middle school. We, um, added auto security at the middle school and we're looking to see if that type of grants available. Just because we would like to get everything in the district on one network. And that way, it can feed to the police, it can feed to us sitting here, et cetera. So that's a part of this, Scott, you know, the super explorer.
Yeah, it's, it's really, uh, gonna be a great feature if, you know, from my house, Dr. Shaverhood's house, we, you know, we get a line call and we can zone in right in that area and the police can do the same thing. It's, uh, I ha- I have something like that right now, but it can only, only works because it's on our server, it only works when I'm in the building. So if I'm in the cafeteria, someone comes in, I can see who's at the main office. But once we go outside the server, uh, the wireless server, I, I don't have that access. So it's, it's really, it's gonna be great. Um, and, and we've been, I, I think we've done a good job staying up with the cameras that need to be replaced.
Is that something that this year?
Is realistic and working.
Yeah.
The, the infrastructure, the internet, yes, that, that's, could be.
I think it's one of those investments that's interesting. Yeah, definitely.
I'd like to say, I mean, even, even the lighting, I mean, this, that's fundamental, I mean, we, we, we take care of the kids, you know, I don't want them to be lit up.
Like, I get worried at town meeting, whenever the light works in the front, nothing's working in the back. And then, then, then as we get going into the basketball season and, uh, and, and volleyball games at night, you know, you've got all these nighttime activities. It, it scares you. There was one year, we actually had to, I don't know if you all remember, at town meeting, we had to have the fire department bring in affordable lights. Yeah, I don't know if you all remember, it was by the softball field, you could hear the thing running, uh, because. Yeah, it was, so. All right, moving on, uh, building technology supplies, these are just basic supplies. We have, um, you know, the Chromebooks, uh, some of them are coming up on four years old. There's a lot of replacement parts that are gonna be needed. We have LCD projectors in classrooms that, they're well-used, which is awesome, and, uh, we're gonna need to replace some of those. There are bulbs, if the, if the, uh, LCD projector is working properly, which most of them are, uh, we do need to replace bulbs on occasion. The bulbs seem to burn out faster than the unit itself. And then, um, these documentary cameras, i- if you haven't seen them in the classroom, it brings the, uh, the education to a whole other level, having a documentary camera, uh, in the classroom. And just the interactive nature of those is phenomenal, so that's budgeted for that line item. So that's kind of, uh, the building technology. And then moving on to, uh, high school classroom instructional technology contracted services. We would like to put out a bid, uh, and I, those of you that were at the school committee meeting last week, uh, saw the interactive view sonic touchscreen. These are the, uh, twenty first century smart boards, if you will, for education. And it just brings the education to a whole nother level, it's about a sixty five inch screen. Um, that's, it looks like a flat screen TV, but it has the capability of, of anyone's computer. And we have, uh, currently, I believe, we have eight of these in the building. And we'd like to start getting more and more. They're not transportable, although as Joyce mentioned, one came over here, uh, but they're meant to be stationary, they're, they're pretty, uh, bulky. And, uh, we'd like to have a few more of those in the classroom. Moving on to high school instructional technology supplies, uh, in here, we would like to purchase six IMAX for our art classes. We have digital art classes that currently have about six of these in the classroom. And they've been gifted through WCTV over the years. Thank you, WCTV. And, uh, we, we're hoping to get six more, so we have approximately twelve to fourteen in the classroom. And, uh, we have one computer for every, every two students. So that's on the technology, I'll, I'll pause with any questions you may have on, on that technology line items. Okay, moving on, high custodial supplies. These are the bulk of this cleaning supplies, a hundred eighty thousand square feet that we have to maintain and clean. The largest portion of this is clean, uh, would be cleaning supplies. Also in here are toilet paper, paper towels, filters, paint supplies, ceiling tiles, we do have to replace a lot of ceiling tiles, bulbs. And then just miscellaneous supplies that we would pick up at Home Depot to maintain the building, all of those. So those are custodial supplies. Pencils and paper, we're really trying to bring down the, the copying paper. We, we did add a little bit this year, uh, because we anticipated, uh, having more students and needing more paper. But I'm really hoping with being one-on-one with Chromebooks, we can send things in electronically, we're using Google, Google Classroom platform. We're really hoping to eliminate a, a good percentage of this line item, not just next year, but in the future. Uh, and again, the biggest portion is copying paper, but there is, there are also other paper that's used in the high school. Paper for our class, end of the year awards, graduation awards, so there's all kinds of paper that's purchased. But make no mistake about it, the biggest part of this is that big WB Mason box of paper, whoever gets the bid, uh, for copying.
You mean all of this right here?
Well, that's district, we'll get to that later, but yes, if I was copying it, uh, the papers I handed up, yes. But again, we try to minimize the number of copies. We also have Lockete paper and pencil, this is our DECA, which is our chapter seventy four program. Um, they do have paper, uh, photopapier paper for their, uh, competition. And they also have a poster maker that they use for competitions, but also, uh, to promote school functions that are going on, not just in the high school, but also in the district.
Okay, to your textbooks, that you need help this cost?
It's a great question, and I brought it up before, I, I think it would definitely reduce some of that paper. Because when you don't have a textbook or you have an outdated textbook, the teacher is always gonna supplement. First of all, if they have an outdated textbook, they're always gonna supplement. If they don't have a textbook, they have no choice but to supplement. So what that means is you're making twenty five copies times if you teach more than one period. Uh, so definitely, that will reduce it. And, and we did see, uh, when we bought world history books a few years ago, we did see a reduction in copies. Um, you know, it was like, you know, we reduced it by about eight or nine percent. And we attributed a large portion of that to the world history books we, we purchased through, uh, I think it was through Free Cash a few years back. So moving on, guidance contracted services, this is our Naviance program. This is the way students apply and, uh, send, uh, transcripts and final information about schools. And do searches for interest inventories or searches for schools that may have what they're interested in. Um, so it really breaks it down, there's all kinds of filters, breaks it down by region, majors. If you want to play sport, it'll have that, the level you want to play, division one, two, or three. So it really does a great job. But most importantly, as a parent, it's gonna allow you to see that the transcript has been sent to BU. And it was sent by U on this date and it was opened by BU on that date. So you have that transparency, so you don't have to worry about, did the snail mail get there? It, it's a great service, but more importantly, uh, it has a whole curriculum that, that goes along with it.
Quick question.
Sure.
If we're able to ensure you get the athletic director, would that be something that they assist with, is making sure as far as that recruiting, they help on that side of it as well?
Well, it's, I think that's a big part of what a full-time athletic director does is.
So it would be like a, a.
Because these coaches want to come in in the morning to meet with kids. And if you're not there, it can be difficult for them to meet with the kids.
And they would be able to assist guidance to ensure that some of this stuff is submitted to the NCA?
Right, because of college preparing hours, as, as you know, you know, the students have to meet certain requirements.
I don't know how our current athletes do it. I don't, I don't know how your guidance staff and your athletic staff are able to do what they do right now, I don't.
They do the best they can, that's where they're at. Okay, um, moving on to the next page, it should say council supplies materials. This would be, uh, college board offers all kinds of publications to the college application process. We subscribe to those. We also have, uh, student agendas for students that need to be organized. We're trying to downsize those, but with the eighth graders in, we wanted to make sure we had those available for all eighth graders. And there are also, there's a very small amount in here for counselors for their supplies that they would need. High conferences, other expenditure, this is very simple, two awesome events that we want to transport our students to. We have a top five brunch in April at Dr. Shaverhood and I attend for our top five graduates. Uh, this is within the conference. And we have an audible, which is, uh, our students that are on our society compete against other schools. And we cover the transportation cost just like we would for a sports event.
So there's nothing in the budget for that last year?
No, we, um, it was four hundred dollars in the budget last year. I was gonna say, I'm paying for that somehow. Uh. Okay.
Are agendas available for other students if they?
Yes, we, we ordered, um, I believe this year, three hundred of them. So a lot of students use their phones for agendas, but some students don't have phones. Or some students really want to see it in front of them, they're visual learners, so we do provide them for all eighth graders and any student that requests it. We got them available in guidance, and we still have them available in guidance, we have a few, two leftovers still. Instructional equipment contracted services, uh, in here, uh, we put a lot of consumables that are used in our culinary woodshop and science labs. Those will be consumables that we have to replace every year. And then moving on to high instructional equipment supplies, this would be science, uh, more science consumables, specifically chemistry. There's a lot of consumables in the chemistry class. And we also put in here, we, we're in need of math calculators for our standardized testing. We want to have, uh, one is appropriate for standardized testing for students to have calculators that we keep track of and that we own in the network. High instructional software, other, this is a, a large item for us. We offer online courses and this year, we're running more online, online courses than ever before. And, uh, the largest portion of this would be through, for Edge Newity, which is our largest provider of online courses for our students. This works out really well when there's not an option for a student's schedule. Because the courses that are offered are either full or, in more cases, they've already taken what's available. So they kind of have a lock in their schedule where they can't fit something in. We push them to take an online course. It gives them an opportunity to take any course that they may want, courses that we otherwise couldn't offer. We also have virtual high school, which is a little more advanced level of online courses. We have our iXL listed in here, uh, which is a math, uh, based curriculum, uh, that they work on online in math class. So these are, excuse me, some, uh, instructional software across there. High software, I, I kind of just merged everything into that one account, so there's nothing listed there.
Scott, what grades are these online courses available to?
They're available to any student in grade nine through twelve, but predominantly it becomes eleventh and twelfth graders. Because the ninth and tenth graders kind of have a lot of flexibility when there's four electives, chances that are offered that period, chances are they haven't taken all four. So the largest percentage will be juniors and seniors, although there are some freshman sophomores that take them. We also use this for our SAT prep course, which all juniors are required to take. So every student graduating from high school is technically required to take at least one online course, which is exciting. Because when they go into college, they're gonna, at the very least, take a hybrid, half online, half online. But most often, they're gonna be taking at least an online course. So we're pretty excited about that.
And these are done on, on Chromebooks?
Chromebooks, and, and we assign them in the library, the librarian oversees the class. And, um, it's been well-received. We actually, this year, for the first time, we ran summer school through this online venue, um, to make it cost-effective to run the summer school program. And what we did is we provided, uh, contentary teachers to work with all the students versus teaching a class in a traditional mode. Okay, I'm gonna move on, I know, Mike, we talked about this just a little while ago, the, the building repair and maintenance. So this, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and I don't think it's unique to Wareham High School. I don't want you to think that the, the sky is falling, but we do have some work that we need to do, uh, in replacing unit vents. Uh, these are the vents that bring in fresh air into the classroom. Um, we have a, a lot of them that need work. We actually went around ironically on Wednesday, um, with an HVAC company to look at every single classroom. We had an early release day on Wednesday, and we spent about three hours going through every square inch of the building to make sure that we had identified every area that needs some work. And some of it's simple, it's replacing a three-quarter horsepower motor in the, in the vent, and some of it's a little bit more dynamic. But there's, uh, we're gonna try and work on fixing the stuff that's cheapest and easiest to fix for us. And then coming up with a, you know, a list of maybe the more detailed work that needs to be done. The building's coming up on thirty years of age, so there's a lot of work that needs to be done. We're hoping to replace the front stairwell, uh, the rubber going up to the front stairwell. We have some form repairs that are inevitable that we need to do every year, locksmith work, glass work, um, and just some condensing units that need to be replaced.
How much of the high school is air-conditioned?
Um, not much.
I mean, I, I mean, if everything was working perfectly?
If everything was working, you'd have approximately thirty-three percent of the school air-conditioned.
And, and that's, even that's, is that not working, that thirty-three percent?
It's, no, we're not a, a third, no, we're not.
So what, what needs to be fixed to make that work?
Well, I, I think in fairness, it's not gonna be able to be fixed in one year. This has been a problem, a problem bef- since before I was principal. So it's not, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be a one-year fix. But basically, what they have in the air-conditioned areas of the classrooms, they have condensing units on the roof above each classroom. And so it's almost like what you would have at your house if you have central air. For every classroom, there's one of those units on the roof. And, uh, many of those units, uh, need to be replaced, which means you need to bring in a crane, put a new one, a new condensing unit up there, connect it. And then, uh, and, and then obviously, calibrate and do all that stuff. It's way over my head, but I've seen it done. I'm just, my, my goal is, quite frankly, is to try and get fresh air in all the classrooms, so we have an awesome learning environment. We have a lot of great things going on at the high school. We're, we're in a great place as far as instruction goes. I just want to provide a great classroom that's not too hot, not too cold, that's just right for learning.
So the fresh air, is that an issue right now?
In some classrooms, I mean, they all have windows, so it's, it's, um, you know, it's, it's not as big of an issue as it would be maybe if it was an inside classroom. But, um, and the dampers are still open, so it's still a lot of fresh air. But we certainly like to have it calibrated so the makeup is accurate with what's being exhausted out is coming in.
Okay.
There's, there's some work to be done.
Okay.
And it, yeah, we're, we have, we have a pretty good tracking mechanism. It's, uh, you know, and we're, and we're plugging away at it. It's not like we're gonna wait, you know, with some of this work we're doing now, we're not gonna wait until July one. We're plugging away on these, on these issues, but it's, it's tough to get these things accomplished. So we're working on it.
So this, I'm sorry, so this year's budget, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, there's nothing budgeted for building repairs?
Well, well, there's free cash that, that we have, that we're gonna use, we, we just received, I think, the appropriation on that. So we had, that was kind of the catalyst for that meeting on Wednesday to get this going. So there's, the numbers, as I mentioned earlier, can be deceiving because it looks like there's only, you know, like, four, all, all together between the five line ends, it looks like maybe like forty thousand dollars. When, you know, we had over a hundred years pass, but there is some free cash that, that makes up for that. So, you know, we, there are things that we have done and will continue to do, um, in that area.
Now, Scott, some of these are rather large projects that seem to be stretched over several years. Is there any way to get, uh, MSBA grants on any of these?
The MSBA, my understanding is it would have to be roof, it would have to be windows, and it would have to be boilers. I don't think ventilation qualifies for any of their, uh, projects. But, you know, we did the roof, if there ever is an opportunity, you know, I think we've.
We did get money for the roof, we did get money for boilers.
The bo- the boilers, you know, there's reimbursement through that, um, but I've never seen anything for ventilation. But you never know, we'll keep our eyes open, that's for sure. So moving on, uh, maintenance of building contracted services, uh, in here, we've got work we need to do to our generator. Simple things such as replacing bubblers, we had, um, the state down, making sure we're ADA compliant. We need to replace almost everyone, well, not everyone, but a, a good percentage of our bubblers to make sure they're compliant. We've got ceilings in two of the bathrooms that need to be replaced, uh, these are not drop ceilings, these are drywall ceilings. Um, we also have repairs to the fire system, the elevator, um, that need to be done. And, and also, if I didn't mention, the gym bleachers need to have some work done on those. Building maintenance supplies, we have some plumbing repairs that we're gonna need to do in the bathrooms, tile repairs in the hallways. And electrical and lighting repairs inside the school. And the last one, um, is the equipment contracted. And, uh, sorry, the last few, the equipment contracted, we need to get something to help us up with the snow removal. We currently have, uh, snow blowers that people at home would use, uh, to remove snow in their driveway. And we're removing over a hundred thousand square feet of sidewalk space, um, uh, fire escape routes to doors, and so we need a little bit of help there. This also includes, uh, the disposal and some lighting and sound work that needs to be done in the auditorium to get that up to speed. Equipment repair, this is really all HVAC work that we anticipate needing to be done above and beyond the free cash that we receive. And then I just. And then I just, high school maintenance equipment is kind of a redundant account, so we zeroed that out last year. I'd certainly entertain any questions you have on HVAC.
When you mentioned repairs to the restrooms, does that, um, include work that needs to be done in the boys' and girls' locker rooms?
That would include some of the locker room work, but I'm really concerned with the ceiling near the cafeteria that I feel is a safety issue, it needs to be addressed for the next few months.
So there's someone wouldn't include that?
It would include some work, but the bulk of the work, the bulk of the work is gonna be-
I get priorities where you got to choose.
The ceiling that I'm concerned with, uh, that's, that's a big priority, I mean, it's not, it, it, it needs work, it's, it's, there was a, a leak above it, and it really needs to be replaced. We have a few courts on that, so, uh, but there's work, you know, there's always routine maintenance work that needs to be done in the building. There may be something six months from now that we didn't anticipate, we can't forecast, um, you know, that you just have to have fixed, you know, we, we had a, a leak on the roof last year. Uh, we didn't anticip- anticipate that, we certainly didn't budget it, it certainly wasn't listed in my budget. But, you know, we had four inches of water in the science classroom at five o'clock one morning. That matriculated down into the first one all the way to the cafeteria. And we only missed one, one class that had to be relocated, so, pretty happy with that, it had to happen. All right, any other questions on maintenance? Okay, moving on, the internet, uh, is pretty standard, um, you know, now with, you know, the one-on-one, um, we have to have that business class internet. I don't think that's anything unique to us. Instructional supplies, these would be, in this case, phys ed supplies, art supplies under this line item. And also some consumables for culinary. The other, high other, these would be some music supplies and some other art supplies. And then the ARCAD is the DECA program, in here are supplies, uh, for competition. Our students compete at the regional, state, and national level, and so that's why that money is in there. Other instructional services will be transportation to competitions for our music department, our JROTC department. And our AP, we have students on Saturdays that, uh, do Saturday sessions to get them up to speed for the AP testing, so we provide transportation, uh, to those.
Scott, how many have them rights?
I believe it's above fifty students right now, yeah, well, they, they can only count grades nine through twelve, so it's fifty students in grades nine through twelve. But then there are a hundred students in grade eight that are involved in a leadership class through that program.
How many go on to?
It's, it's probably, believe it or not, you know, everyone thinks JROTC is a recruiting tool for the military.
Yeah.
We get just as many students that go in the military that aren't in that program than are. I would estimate one to two per year go on to the military out of that program.
From the RAC?
From the JROTC program.
And then another one or two?
One or two, just from the general public.
Yeah.
Right, it's, it's wild, because you'd think it'd be skewed a little bit more to the JROTC, but it's not, they're not allowed to recruit, um, that, and, and oftentimes, we're not, we're JROTC through the army. More oftentimes than not, they don't go into the army.
Air Force.
Air Force Marines.
Yeah.
Navy, so it's, it just depends on where their interest lies, as far as what they, what, where they go.
Uh, you mentioned occupational ed, DECA, um, is staffing there's taken quite a hit in the last couple of years, hasn't it?
It has, um, but it's student, it's student-driven.
But I don't see asking for it.
No, you don't, because we have two full-time teachers, um, and that was the need based on students' interest. Everything in regards to staffing, uh, ordering supplies, scheduling students is based on student interest. I tell every department head, I hope you come to me when we have, when we go through the student selection, and say, I just don't have enough teachers in my department to run all these courses the kids want. Because that's a great problem to have, unfortunately, we haven't had that problem in that department in a while. And, uh, you know, I, I hope it comes back around. I, I wanna be saying to Dr. Shaver, hey, I need another science teacher, I need another business teacher, this is, look at these numbers, how am I gonna run these classes? I only have, you know, eighteen sections, how can I make this happen? Um, and, and, you know, we can still, if we get to that point, we can make adjustments in departments. But, it's, I'm gonna tell you, it's gonna be driven by the students, and they ask me indeed.
So there's less interest in these last couple of years as well?
I think the interest has waned a little bit, but I think we've got really, we've got two dynamic teachers that are in there, and I think we've got some really dedicated and motivated students. I think it's quantity more than quality right now, we've got some, I'm sorry, quality more than quantity, we've got, I've been up for a while, school council meeting before this. So it's quality over quantity, uh, we've got some really good students in there, as, as you know, and, uh, they're really dedicated, uh, to the cause, so, uh, I'd rather have that than, you know, a hundred kids that really aren't interested in, in competing and being involved in the program.
Scott, you talk about AP transportation for the Saturday sessions, are we still the recipient of a grant, like grant, the Muncie grant?
The grant is, is over, we are now, um, involved in the program at will. And they provide half-price training for our staff, they provide, um, the Saturday sessions at a very low cost. This year, last year, we were very fortunate, we had half the trainings here in this building, because we were kind of the central school. Now a couple of the schools out west have joined on, um, uh, so now we're kind of, like, the middle's kind of the Bay Haven area, so we have to kind of transport now, but, um, it's still great for our students, remember, we're competing with students down south that go to school a month before our students, and they're all taking the same test. So to have those Saturday sessions where they bring in these world-class instructors is an awesome opportunity for our students. And it requires a little bit of dedication, obviously, they're giving up their Saturday mornings, and it's tough to schedule. Try and find a Saturday where there's not something going on at Wayham High School, it's very difficult.
That's huge.
It's awesome. So, moving on, high school regular curriculum department supplies, we don't use that line item, we kinda mesh that in with our instructional supplies. Printing and paging, moving on to that, we have, um, repairs that are needed to our paging system. Just yesterday, uh, the paging system and the bell system are one, just yesterday, we tried to reset the clocks. I had to play, I close your ears, Dr. Shaver, I had to, I had to get behind the blocks and try to figure out why the keyboard wasn't working, which is pretty scary, but we were able to, uh, we were able to get the, the time adjusted properly, but there's some work that needs to be done to that. And there is also a need for, uh, some new radios, two new radios for our, our administration. High general office supplies, in here, um, you know, this is kind of a, a large part of this, believe it or not, is our mailings, we try and minimize the amount of snail mail we need to, uh, utilize. But inevitably, at the end of the year, the largest portion of this is in the fourth quarter when we have to mail out report cards, but there's also spe- specialized notifications that need to be mailed out. Sometimes, schools don't allow for us to use Naviance for the application process, so we have to go old-school with, uh, a lot of this recommendation, they want hot copies and things like that. Some of this as well as basic supplies that we need to provide for our teachers, um, and, uh, you know, envelopes, things like that, just basic clerical supplies that are needed. IDs as well are in here.
That's a question about that, so, um, IDs, we talked about that last year, about requirements students continue to wear the A P's. And there's talk about scanners and different pieces of equipment you could use, were you able to-
We were, we were, yes, thank you for bringing that up, so, um, we have proximity scanners, we had some proximity scanners, but we really were able, uh, through Dr. Shaver Hood and the technology department, really able to bring it to a whole new level. So we now can, uh, monitor students that are going into the nurse, which we couldn't before. Bathrooms, we have two sets of bathrooms now, because there's a different set that's open for lunchtime versus the daytime. Both of those now have scanners, we only had scanners on one. The library now has a scanning mechanism, so we can monitor who's going into the library, and really track that, and, and provide, you know, some good reporting, um, in regards to the usage. We have the front door, which we always had, now we have the back door, we also have the custodian's door, and we've always had the gym door. So we really almost doubled the infrastructure on the proximity. Cafeteria's working on a new system where I hope we're gonna be able to, to scan, uh, as we, as the kids buy lunch, which I've been told that's gonna happen. And, uh, so, you know, it's, it's, it's gotten much better, and, uh, we, you know, part of the, we really wanted these to be a useful tool, uh, for our students. And it was actually, uh, unintentional side effect of the busing IDs, now they have two IDs, uh, kind of on their landed, which has helped out as well. So it's been, it's been, you know, it's not perfect, but it's been really, really great start with the IDs. I think between the infrastructure that we've changed, and probably more importantly, the bus IDs, uh, it's really put a little more emphasis on needing an ID.
Has it led to less students not?
I don't wanna jinx it, but so far, so far, yes, uh, it becomes a bigger issue in the spring, but, uh, so far, and it helps having, like, half the school is brand-new to the high school. You know, between the, the eighth and ninth graders.
I've gotten that forensic call to bring me out of the school for my son, so.
We do have, you know, a temporary one, so they can always grab a temporary one, if, you know, there are, you know, I, I forget, I have a backup, uh, but on occasions, I'll forget, so, you know, you, you, sometimes you need a temporary one. Um, conferences, graduation memberships, others, thi- this is, we are required to be associated with many different, uh, programs. Obviously, the, the most expensive one is NEAS to maintain our accreditation, we have to pay a fee every year. There are, there are other expenses, uh, fee associations, NASSP, ASCD, MSAA, South Coast Conference. We do have to, on, on Saturday sessions, we have to have the AP Saturday sessions, we have to have supervision. So this is kind of where we covered under other expenditure, we are involved with Project Lead the Way, there is a fee for that. We have DECA, which we have to pay dues, uh, fees, fees to be associated with DECA. And we also have teachers that we try and bring into advanced placement trainings, as we mentioned earlier, um, that we do have to pay for those trainings. And we're coming up, believe it or not, on an EAS self-study, we have to start appropriating money for NEAS for our self-studies, starting in the spring of, uh, twenty twenty. So we're up for accreditation in twenty twenty-two, so we've gotta start the self-study, which does cost money for that process. So those are conferences, graduations, and membership, and there are some, there's some money in here as well for graduation expenses, I omitted that.
Uh, Scott?
Yes.
Uh, I, I, maybe I just, on, uh, for the teachers, what expenses does the school pay for teachers? For, like, for example, training or continuing education or, or, or professional booths, can you just?
Sure, so, the district through the contract provides money, uh, for them to take, uh, the thousand dollars, Dr. Shaver, thousand dollars per year. They can use that towards professional development or graduate coursework, so that's, you know, that's right there. Then we provide for our, our teachers any training that we see appropriate, uh, based on the needs of the school. So, you know, we try and keep our AP and ID teachers current in their, in their practice. And if there are other opportunities that come up, uh, we would send teachers there, uh, and that's where that line item would come in.
Do teachers have something like continuing education, certain amount of credits or courses they have to get every few years? To keep their certificate?
Correct.
Do you pay for that?
We pay for what we can, but I'll, I'll, I'm sorry? Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, it's really through the district, through the curriculum instruction assessment, budget area, where are the law of that?
But I think it's fair to say some of it has to be-
Yeah.
On their own.
Right.
You know, we, we provide what we need to provide, to provide awesome instruction. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, principal's office supplies, this is really, I'll classify this as recognition of student achievement. Uh, we put AP banners in the hallways, hopefully you, you saw those during the town meeting in the foyer. Uh, we do Viking awards monthly, where we award certificates for students in recognition of their achievements. So that's really all that's used for, we don't have any contracted services under the principal's account. Guidance testing contracted service, this would be our PSAT testing, which we just finished in October, and, uh, we pay for that. Textbook, related software, and the, we are hoping to replace our foreign language textbooks this year. We have not replaced textbooks in quite a few years, and I mentioned, we have a lot of textbooks that are outdated. The nice thing about the new textbooks, they all come with an online license, so you're actually paying more for the online license than you are for the textbook. So, um, that's something we're excited about.
So Scott, the difference of thirty-seven thousand is basically you, replacing textbooks, is this?
Correct. Two, textbooks average, about a hundred dollars a book.
And, and then the online license too?
Right, so basically the way the publishers do it now is the online license is really what you're paying for, the textbooks oftentimes are kind of like a throw-in, so.
So you get kind of updates or so forth, could you go online?
Exactly, exactly.
And how, how long is that good for, that license?
It, it depends what you negotiate, it has to start with at least five years for me, but-
So you're a good negotiator.
I, I don't know if I'm good, but I try hard, I try. Uh, because that's important, because as you said, uh, to your point, the updates, you know, you're not, you know, at these, sometimes every two years, there's a copyright date on these books. If you have a physical copy, you're not getting those updates, if it's online, it's an instantaneous update, so, it's, and we're one-on-one, you know, with Chromebooks, so it's easy. So moving on, um, and, and we hope to keep this line item there, so we've got a tremendous need for replacing textbooks. We hope we can keep that going, um, and, and keep that established. More on the textbook software media other, um, these will be, this will be for the library, the library license, we have to have a license to, to allow books to be taken out. Uh, we provide journals for students in the library. High ARCAD, more, again, more with DECA, these are competition study guides. And the license for Competition University, which is an online, uh, competition site, to prepare our students for their DECA competition. Clerical overtime, pretty standard, there are different things that come up, different requests that we have of clerical, we need that done after hours. Sub custodians, the rest, uh, I think I can kind of skim through with paraprofessional subs, sped subs. Just continues on with a lot of, uh, substitutes, uh, I'll just kind of, just go through that, but I'm probably running late. And then, uh, moving on to custodial overtime, this is another one that's a moving target, uh, there's two things that, uh, factor into this. One is, when is the last day of school, and when is the first day you open, and if that area, if that, uh, the number of days is short, a lot of times we'll need them to come in for a few hours to get the building ready, uh, usually in August. And then obviously, the other moving target is, uh, would be the snow days, if we have a lot of snow days, that number can fluctuate. The heat, I, I really wanna give kudos to Renee Nascimento, we are heating a building that's just a little bit under two-hundred thousand square feet for a cost of sixty-eight thousand dollars a year. He does a phenomenal job of making sure the heat's on when it needs to be and it's not when it doesn't. I often ask him, are you paying for the heating bill out of your pocket, because I feel like sometimes he is. So he does a great job of that, copying leases, you'll see that has gone down drastically. Um, I, I think we're in a good place, and I hope, being one-on-one, we can send things digitally versus the old-school way that we have done for years. And then utilities, um, we're, we're trying, but the, you know, with the kilowatt-hours and the amount of usage the school gets, that's, I know that's a big number. So that would conclude all of the line items, I hope I didn't bore you with all these, but I certainly would entertain any conversations that you may have.
At the end of this Excel sheet, you wouldn't have to add totals, would you?
I do.
You know, like the budget, the expenditures, the budget and requests, so you can get a, like, an idea of increase your estimate.
Is it not on the last, your last page?
We don't have it on your last page.
We don't, we don't have it.
We don't have P D O P.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We don't have those.
I will, I have copies, I have copies, I'll, I'll send them, send them to you, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Is that okay? No, I have copies.
Yeah, we locked down the killing, so.
It was corporate, didn't it?
Not doing the counting.
This will, the last page will have all of your answers that you asked, and, again, certainly all entertaining questions.
So I have asked for a, um, the number of students that are held back per grade, did we have that?
It's not, we're compiling it, so this will be handed down.
Okay. You don't have it on hand for, for grade.
I know there's a lot of ninth graders that are held back more than any, any other grade in the high school, but I'd be, I'd be guessing, I can give you an average, but I'd be guessing.
And you just took on, you took on the eighth grade.
Excuse me. Well, I'm excited about that, because, you know, there's not gonna be a social promotion, so, I would venture to say you'll see a larger number of main graders being held back unless ninth graders next year, not this year, but.
And, and, and for the people that might watch this later, what does social promotion mean?
Oftentimes you, you have age disparity issues where you may not be able to have a student in that school, so they may get promoted because of their, their age. So, you know, there's all kinds of studies out about, does retention work, does it not work? You cannot, you know, hold size of it, I'm just excited that we'll be able to have a program where an eighth grader can still graduate with his or her peers. But we're gonna give them, be able to give them some skills that they need to be successful, so there's, uh, that's, I think that's gonna be exciting, and I think what it will lead to is less ninth graders being held back, and there's so many reasons nine, my ninth graders struggle, it's not that they're not ready, it's, and it's not unique to Wayham High School, trust me. Um, they, they just need, uh, you know, it's a new environment, new expectations, so I think having the eighth graders there every year where we're not calculating GPA, we're not calculating credits, they're gonna have an easier transition, it's gonna be, it's gonna be awesome.
No, I, I know you had made a big deal about that, and that was exciting when you mentioned it too.
I think the other piece is in the high school, students that fail the class then have options either at night school, uh, summer program, or online to take- summer program, or online to take their tests. And then they can receive credit to move into whatever category, like junior, senior, freshman, sophomore. Whereas the elementary and middle school, you don't have those options. And summer school is your only option. So retention in the high school is a little bit different than retention in the other areas.
I think that's the same, we look anywhere, it's, it's, again, not unique to where in high school.
How many globalized students do you have?
Quite a few. I want to say probably thirty-something when I went to the last meeting, so that was at the meeting. I get rosters at the halfway point of the school year for each club, so I'll be able to get you a more definitive number in January.
Scott, how you feel, we're like four months into the budget, or one-third of the three-year? How do you feel we're doing on, on your budget, under or over?
Um, in the red, in quite a few accounts. But, you know, there are some accounts that are in the black, so there's offset.
You think you're kind of where you should be then?
Uh, the largest percentage of our money on instructional supplies is spent in the first quarter, because obviously we need that for the start of the school year. We have everything we need right now. My concern is at the, you know, at the midway point, we have half-year courses that we have to recalculate, readjust, and we, we do a great job of being creative, we'll be working with Sue on that, and we'll get the students what they need.
All right, thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Did I stay on time?
No.
No.
Who's next?
Tracy, she's also.
Oh, she wanted me? All right, sorry to make you be late, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, all right, thank you, have a great day, and let's hope you have a great night.
I have seen that.
Good. I'm going to pass around our current class sizes and projected class sizes for next year. And that's what we base the budget off of. Second number is class size, sorry. Total number and. Total number and then the average class size, yes.
I'm sorry.
No, they didn't. So we're planning basically for, you know, relatively the same class size for next year, a little bit more. We have students coming in and coming out every day, so I would say the number is going to be around five forty. We have about a twenty-five percent special education population, similar to both years. Our budget drivers for this year, for next year would be building needs. We're looking at a school that was renovated, so we still have older parts of the building. HVAC, still plagues are every day. We have old U-Events that we can't get parts for anymore, so they're on special order. We have a system that needs to be updated for the computer to even read what's wrong with the U-Events. We did receive some free cash, so we are working at chipping away on the HVAC to see what our biggest needs are. We know that we have two chillers that are desperately in need of service, so that would be our first priority. And also, a budget driver would be online textbooks. So most of the companies are coming, coming with class textbooks. We have the Chromebooks. Our teachers much prefer the use of the Chromebook, so we're looking at online for ELA. It's not been purchased since nineteen ninety-four. And social studies just revised their curriculum frameworks, so we're looking for online curriculum for that for sixth and seventh grade social studies. Our priorities are always student learning. And they also have the class sizes and materials that we need to engage in the creative learning for them. Staffing needs are very similar. We're looking just to be ID-ready, which would be to have two foreign language teachers. We currently have none at the middle school. So in order to be considered as an ID school, you have to offer foreign language to our sixth and seventh graders. Also, to add a point-five assistant principal. We right now, we went from two-point-five assistant principals last year to one-point-five this year, and we had two deans last year to no deans. So we would really like to increase that point-five to a full-time assistant principal. My computer's stopped, line by line, is that what you would prefer me to do?
Sure.
I think I would. Okay, sure. Do they have any misorder? Is that?
Books.
Yes. Yes. They just feel bad for reasons that's out of that thing, so. Yes, okay. So I'm going to start with middle school computer supplies. And for that, we have the interactive TVs that I, I saw at school committee meeting. We would be looking to increase that to one more. And our projectors are old, we need to replace them every single year, and document cameras, it's just replenishing them. It's also a high cost for the bulbs, for the projectors. I spoke into our technology person, the interactive TVs are more money, but in the end, will probably last longer and be more efficient, because you don't have to replace the bulbs, so there are TVs in there. So that's what we. Like, for that, the next one is middle school custodial supplies. That has increased just because of the increased cost and everything that we're asking for to keep the building afloat. So that has to do with toilet paper, soap, everything that we need to run a building for close to six hundred students.
I'm sorry, Tracy, can you go back to, when you talked about the interactive TV, how does that compare to a computer? Is it just projecting?
Yeah, yeah, so it doesn't just project, so you can touch, so it's like a smart board too. It's all together. So it projects, it's a smart board, the kids can touch it, they can write on it, they can do everything with it.
So I guess my question is, how long does it last? So computers, they become obsolete.
Right.
So is that the same type of thing?
I didn't ask the tech department that. What I did ask is, is it more efficient to have that? Is that going to last long? These projectors do not last long at all. They get a ton of use all day, every day, but they said they would last much longer. So, so like a TV, I would say, but I don't, their use, I don't know if they really know technology-wise, how long they're going to last.
How much do bulbs cost to get them?
Three hundred.
Three hundred dollars to four hundred dollars to replace a bulb.
Just a bulb. And what have you done to that?
Well.
If you get it, it's on all day.
And, yeah, we can hold, I mean, we turn it off when we are not using it, because we're so erotic about it now, but they last a couple of years, half-baths, a year.
The projector?
The bulbs, the bulbs.
The projector is not really an issue. They burn up.
Yeah, well, they've got you, I think it's a money thing.
Sort of like the ink given projector.
Yeah, true, yeah.
It's like the ink given projector, right? It's the ink that costs you the money.
Can we get LED bulbs for those?
I know, huh? I don't know, I don't think you can. Maybe they make them now, though, the projectors that take LED.
Right, I mean, they've been around for a while.
Yeah, right.
LED bulbs last a lot longer.
Long time, yes. Um, and then, my next account is the middle school paper and pencil. That's where everything comes out of, that we need, paper, pencils, scissors. And there's a little bit of an increase, but not significant. Middle school software, we do currently have two software programs that we use on a regular basis. Lexia for grade five and MobiMax is supplemental material that the students can access at home. They can access on their Chromebooks. And they give us a pretty decent price for the entire school. Uh, middle school maintenance, so we did get some free cash, so some of this could change, but we have significant roof repairs, not on the new part of the building, so our E-wing, where you enter is the new part, but on our A-wing and D-wing. And that's largely impacted by our seagulls. So they drop their shells on the roof and they peck at it, and they peck, and they make holes in our roof. So the membrane is broken. Uh, so we do have a roof person coming to tell us on A and D-wing what that will cost to see for free cash, what we think.
Is that the thirty-nine thousand dollar thing?
No, uh, uh, building maintenance, maintenance of building contracted services.
Twelve thousand?
Twelve thousand one hundred.
Right about, right about it then.
Sorry, I just have this one, yes.
So the twelve thousand dollars would be put into the roof repair?
Well, it would be fire alarm system, the security system, all of these that we have to upkeep and repair. The roof repairs, elevator repairs, it's those type of things, yeah.
The membrane, I remember I think Scott said the same thing in the past about the high school. Do we have a roof, when we did the high school roof, does it have a membrane that is like shell? You know what I mean, like, are we just going to have this problem again?
I will ask, the roofing guy, they have not come back out. It's very difficult to get contractors to come out, but we have a call into about five companies. So you would think that it would be a problem that a lot of buildings have, so that they could make a membrane, membrane that they can't get through. All right, and I'm now on the middle school maintenance of building supplies, which is a significant jump. We didn't have this in our budget for last year, and it, it really has to do a huge amount, which would be fifteen thousand dollars worth for our HVAC. I'm not sure even the free cash is going to cover what needs to be done in our building.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was going to ask you about.
So we, so we spend about fifteen thousand dollars a year on repairs. Our U-Events are constantly broken, constantly.
Why?
They're an old, it's an antiquated system, they tell me.
So, so how much of the middle school, if everything worked perfectly, how much of the middle school has air conditioning?
All of E-wing, bottom floor and top floor. D-wing does not have it, including the cafeteria. And then in A-wing, the auditorium, the library, and a couple of offices are supposed to, but that's it.
So we can't, it has that big, huge sock thing up there, right? Like, what is that used for?
I don't know of the sock thing.
That's wrong, geez, okay.
I honestly don't know. There is turbines on top of the building that are supposed to take moisture out. So when they redid the middle school, the cafeteria was the only place that had air conditioning. In their infinite wisdom, they took out the air conditioning in the cafeteria that is surrounded by glass windows. So it gets to be hundreds of degrees in there.
Um, and just kind of going back a little bit to the, to the roof, is it leaking right now?
There are areas of our roof that leak.
Badly?
There was one area that we fixed in end of September that we're hoping isn't.
Are we doing it mold?
No, no, a little bit, I know. So it's just constantly repairing it right now.
At what point would the HVAC, does it make sense to replace it if it's antiquated?
That's what we're looking at right now. Like, what, and what do you replace? I don't know, I'm not an HVAC guy, but from what I understand, the U-Events themselves have parts that need to be replaced. But the whole system is on, online system, where ours is so antiquated. Normally, they could look at their computer and just tell where the problem is and how to fix it. We don't have that, it's not updated enough.
I'm just, I'm just going to say what I said to Scott.
Yeah.
So, so if, if you're following social media at all with the new school, the big, the big thing that people keep saying is that we're not maintaining what we have already.
Yeah.
Right, and I don't want to hear that again.
Yeah, definitely.
So, so if, if things need to be fixed, I want them fixed, then we'll borrow the money if we have to. If it's, if it's like past its end of life, we'll see about replacing it. But that's, as a school committee, we need to, we need, we need to do, you need to tell us what you need, we need to help get the money for it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I wonder if we're spending how many thousands each year of repairs?
Yeah, maybe. You know, like, how many years would it make sense to replace it to something that's efficient?
Understood.
Uh, middle school equipment contracted, that is for, to repair the current snow blowers, the snowplows, our floor lifts, our vacuums, it's just the general repairs, and that went down to five thousand. And then the next one is middle school maintenance of equipment supplies, which is to replace the snow blower, the same thing, needing enough snow blowers to make sure that we have proper snow, and to replace a vacuum. Middle.
We're replacing the snow blowers at the high school and the middle school. Are these manually operated snow blowers?
Correct.
And wouldn't it be, wouldn't it make sense to get a big tractor-operated one, combine the costs, and go out and spend twenty thousand dollars on a snow blower? Now, you can cover an awful lot more area quickly
I would assume so, yeah.
with something.
You can't get into some of the smaller spaces, like the egg, like sidewalks, would you?
Yeah, so we are.
You can do sidewalk, you could do.
And then that emergency exit areas, I just wondered.
I don't know.
Do you mean like the big one that the town has, that Gary runs sometimes?
Well, I'm talking about a sidewalk snow blower.
We've, in the high school, we've put in the high school budget of Kubota, which is one of the machines that you drive. I think it's like twenty-nine thousand. Yeah, we're going to explore lease-to-buy, lease-to-own, just because we're seeing snow blowers year after year, and they went down because of all the snow moving, we have to go, so yes. But we also need snow blowers, because there are some entrances, as much as we'd like to drive up and get as close as we can, we would be breaking the laws, so we are trying to look in balance.
Kubota's make a great tool, you can cover an awful lot more property with a tractor-operated one than you can by a manual one. And then, a little push one would be body of still, no, that would be fifteen hundred dollars.
Yes. Middle school instructional other supplies, that's also seen a significant increase. That's due to what we're trying to do with the curriculum. We're trying to really be grossed in ID, hands-on projects, innovative, creative. So we have supplies for each subject area that we're hoping to increase our project areas and our innovation. Middle school other student activities, basically for some conferences, student conferences, field trips, buses, grade-five orientation money, and a couple of miscellaneous things that clubs may need, like our internals or honor society. Next is middle school principal's account. Basically there, it would be toner and ink cartridges, yearly subscriptions to magazines. Uh, middle school principal other expenditures, this is dues, travel, that would be eight thousand. Middle school principal's office contracted services, we have our NYPD for ID training, and that kept the same as last year. Middle school principal's office contracted services, we have our, um, NYPD for IV training and that kept the same as last year. Middle school media, videos related to curriculum, just updating those. And then middle school regular educational textbooks, this is where you'll see a significant increase and that was, um, we're projecting around fifty thousand dollars to update, um, our online resources and textbooks, social studies in ELA.
He said ELA had been up since nineteen ninety-four.
Except grade five, except grade five, this is both of these programs.
This is grade six and seven, but grade five has the same program in the grades, um, K through five, four, he was kidding.
Questions, concerns? Yes.
Alright, so you, uh, handed this out.
Yes.
I was hoping to see it broken down by like class, like how many English classes you have, how many kids are in each education? Or an average of kids in the English class, do you have that information?
I do, I don't have it, but I-
So, so for example, this is, uh, I mean, I'd like to get that, but, but this is like what Scott had given us.
Yeah, I didn't realize he was passing that out, but I happened to get it too.
But let me ask you this, I mean, going through, look at this, right? So, I mean, do you have any like non-special ed classes that have like maybe four kids in?
No. No, well, I should say that, we have small group classes for special ed. So by law, you're required to provide an umbrella of services. So we have what's called small group classes.
Oh, right, so-
It's a very small population. Um, we run one ELA and one math in each grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, and seventh grade.
But that's special ed, right?
Correct.
Right, so non-special ed, right?
Yes.
Do you have any, any backgrounds in that?
Oh god, no.
No, how about like five kids, right? I mean, seven kids?
No, no.
Yeah, right?
No.
So this is, I mean, we-
Yes, that's it.
It, it's, it's, it's great that we can do this at the high school, right? But there's gotta be equity and, and-
Yeah, I, I do think though, Mike, just to give the high school their due. In a high school, you have to offer a plethora of opportunities or else our kids are going to go other places. Do you know what I mean?
Well, part of our mission statement is to make sure each student has what they need.
And high school is, high school is different. High, high school is just, it, it, it's just different.
How can you compare class size, I mean, I would compare the class-
I can't because I don't have the recall.
She's, you're getting, she's continued for it. But the class size, I mean, you could compare it to another high school, but you can't compare class sizes from the high school to the middle school or even to the elementary school.
I get that, but if you're gonna, I, I can't, I can't justify four kids. I'm paying a master, a, a, a teacher with a master's degree for how many minutes to sit in front of four kids?
But those are four kids who are probably in the top ten percent that need same opportunities.
Kids at the lower end need the more attention, no?
But they do get it, they get it. They also get it.
I'm seeing IV, I'm seeing AP, I'm-
I have to say, I kind of switched views on that. I was very much, why do we have two, three, four, seven? But then I have to say, being a parent, you know, for a young lady who challenges herself, I like that we can offer classes that are still going to challenge her and stimulate her. You know, this is the product that we are producing, the citizens that we're producing. And just because there's only four of them doesn't mean that they deserve the same opportunity to be challenged and to learn.
I think it's great, I think we could, I wish we could do it for everyone, but the, the-
We are.
A middle school doesn't have anywhere near those numbers of classes.
I think it's, it gets different once you get into high school. You can have middle or middle school to high school, you just cannot.
English, math, I mean, it's, I don't know.
No, it's very different. When you get up there, you're talking calculus versus algebra, not four different math classes.
Yeah, so, but it's different. So this year, what did you, Tracy, you started an advanced math program in the sixth grade?
Uh, yeah, um, we have, yes, in six and seven, correct.
Right, so that was their way of creating a program for those kids. So they do do things, it's just-
I, I just think that the high school does a great job and they have such, they have different advantages over the middle school. And, and, and I think we need to bring some of that to the middle school. That's, that's just me, you get this through.
Thank you, I appreciate that, I, I just think they, they just, they do run differently. And we have, we're math-stopping our middle school.
Hopefully everybody helps today, hopefully. So I have a, I have a question.
Yes.
So your, your increase, the total increase is a hundred and eleven thousand.
Correct.
How much of that can, can you attribute to that IV? Is there a, an extra expense?
In math, so staffing would go in another budget line. Um, so while the increase would be the fifty thousand dollars for textbooks that we're looking at IV recommended textbooks, they do have curriculums that they, um, promote, it's not a curriculum, but they do promote certain, they've researched them, looked through them. So that's the fifty thousand dollars. And then there is that other line that would attribute probably about fifteen thousand, which is IV-related materials. So fifteen of fifteen, sixty-five, yeah.
Okay.
Great question. Yes, so for heating.
Yes.
Uh, I'm forgetting ahead of myself, but mine will also align for heating as well.
Correct.
But we're, it's literally the same school. I know it's school inside school, but it's literally the same school.
Correct, so Susan-
So this, is this exceed, is this eating, so we spent ninety-five thousand dollars two years ago, only budgeted fifty-eight for this year, but is your sixty-five thousand and more had mine in common?
Yes, I'm not sure how Joan, um, how that's figured out, but mine is that they're doing a percentage, right? So they're doing a percentage, so based on the number of students that we have, how much the middle school is paying, how much money.
Okay.
It's really-
Number of students versus squarpy?
Yes.
Yes. Great.
Thank you.
Alright, so, so you just presented to us, so, for example, let's say a grade six math with three, three students in it.
That must be special ed.
Alright, so it's not differential.
It's gotta be special ed.
Yeah, alright, so we'll have to look at that.
Alright.
Alright. Which I understand, you know, which is certainly kind.
Oh, great. I don't, our unit odds might basically run, where you're seeing the totals, like, on my class size. So gym class for grade six will be twenty-three point five. All students take gym, all students take art, so basically they're very similar. Some of my math classes can go down to sixteen, seventeen, eighteen because we have the accelerator, which we can put twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, really focus students in math who are progressing higher numbers than that. So.
Uh, earlier I spoke with Scott, Scott mentioned social promotion and kids being, you know,
Yeah.
advanced because of their age. How much of that happens, do you think?
We're not socially promoting, we're taking each child, um, individually. So what the research tells us, and it's research throughout the years, you repeat students at middle school and they're sixty to eighty percent more likely to drop out. So it's individually by student what they need. With their parents considering their social emotional needs, we do have summer school. They do attend, um, a program that Jane Fandulus runs at the high school with social workers. Our goal is always to get them to the next grade, if at all possible.
So Tracy.
Yes. Hi.
How you doing on your budget this year? You're going further the way through?
Um, good so far. We can't watch right now, so. I've been told everything needs to be approved, so I'm not sending, so I think I'm doing good.
So you're doing good.
I'm not hurting right now.
So anything you worry desperately about?
Uh, I desperately need to get the HP under control and figure out exactly what we're doing. It's really, really difficult working with contractors.
How much time do you think you spend doing that?
An exorbitant amount of time. I really do, I mean, it's a daily two or three hours figuring out with the janitor, with the AP, what we need to do, what contractors we have coming in, meeting with them, so it's, it's a lot. So that's like two to three classes.
They don't have like overall means first, four.
Not really, yeah. One of the things that we're looking at, and they spend a lot of time, um, is the cafeteria. We need to restore the air conditioning in the cafeteria for a number of reasons. So we've been, um, working with contractors, getting close, first quote came in pretty quickly. It was for, plus one hundred and sixty-three thousand. We then started chasing, trying to chase down other people because we need three quotes at least. The other one being at eighty, eighty-five.
That's a scary.
Yeah, and we're still waiting to receive the third quote. One of the reasons why we're so, um, focused on the cafeteria, every student goes to the cafeteria every day. When you have two hundred little bodies in the cafeteria, I think our heat jumped up close to a hundred degrees, even on the days that we were not at a hundred outside. On the two days that we didn't have school, had we been in the cafeteria, we would have approached probably a hundred and ten degrees as well. When you look at the floor, also the humidity, our cafeteria floor gets a, um, just a sheen of moisture on it and we have safety concerns. So we typically have two or three people fall regularly, um, daily if, if we don't, and we even have blowers going, everything else. So it's not, we're not trying to address it, we just can't keep up with it. So that's one of our areas of focus, um, and the HVAC. To speak to that a little bit, you know, during the past several years, we've been making some decisions. Do you wanna keep staff in front of students or, and where do we get money? I think we're rapidly approaching where we're going to be coming to capital planning and the town's saying, we need X amount of money to address the needs of our buildings because in our budget, we simply cannot do that with the revenue that the town's bringing in. And it's not from the lack of the town not addressing our needs, they just don't have the revenue to give us. However, the conditions of our buildings in some of the areas such as HVAC, um, some of the plumbing areas, we're to the point where even if you would come and say, I'm gonna give you five hundred thousand dollars through capital, I'm not sure we would address all of the issues. And that's going to be a decision that the committee will need to be making in very likely this budget cycle.
Do we have the resources to go and develop a, a maintenance plan? So that you can go before capital planning and say, we need to go and schedule two million dollars worth of repairs on the high school and a million dollars on the middle school? So that the capital planning committee can get together and go out and suggest that we go and bond it? I mean, it sounds like we're getting to the point where we're going, we're going to need to go bond some of these capital-type repairs.
Yes, we're, we're building that kind of a plan because it is, it's a priority for us. Um, and it's going to be a safety concern, very shortly to be done. So we're looking at how do we develop, how do we get the, what the cost is going to be? Because I can't come to you very well and say, well, I think I need about this much money without solid information. So that's what we're working on right now.
Do we, do we have internally, do we have the people who can do that? Is it, we don't have someone who's looking over the, the maintenance needs of all the schools, buildings? It sounds like each building is doing their own thing as best they can and, you know, Tracy's spending hours trying to put it together.
You know, once again, that's kind of a, it's been a budgetary issue for us. Do we put somebody over our buildings and grounds full-time? Or do we keep teachers in front of students? And that's been a, a decision that we've been making all along. To, what we're also trying to do is to become very creative because we know we have so much, many HVAC needs. One of the options we're exploring is can we subcontract with a HVAC company for the worker who is just going to be in our building, buildings, full-time doing our maintenance? We probably have enough work for an HVAC person for a year, two years. Several years ago, we tried to hire a person solely for HVAC. We could not find anyone who wanted to come and work for us. Love to have a person because I would just have an old round of new calibrations. I mean, there's things that need to be done that will pay off dividends down the road if we had that kind of expertise available.
Instead of having our building principals, like you said, using more time to try to pull any of that?
And I know that Tracy is starting more dot HVAC in three months.
I walked on the roof because the superintendent made me.
It's a great age. You know, and we know, so, yeah, just, uh, probably, I don't know, before my time, we had squirrels living in one of our flywheels and killed them, killed the flywheel, didn't kill the squirrel. So you find out all these things when you're out walking the world. Any other questions for Tracy?
Also, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy.
Morning, everybody. So I'm Joan Siemens, the principal of Minot Forest School, presenting the Minot Forest budget. Uh, so I've given you two handouts, color-coded, I love to stand out. Um, so going through my staffing needs and then I'll go through our budget. So right now I have a full-time assistant principal, Mrs. Murphy. She oversees the academics and she oversees discipline. And I'm sharing the assistant principal with the middle school, Mrs. Pont. They also have a full-time. Um, we're finding that to be challenging at times, try to share one person between two different buildings and two different, uh, school times. So I am requesting a full-time dean who can help assist with the discipline of special education programs and students. Um, Mrs. Tobin left last year. I didn't replace that position as an assistant principal. We did have a department chair who helped fill in, but that position was carved. Um, and we're filling that void this year, so that's why I'm asking to have a position placed there. I've given you some information about why I feel that way, um, as I just said. The dean also has to teach a few periods a day, so what I would like them to do is to teach and work with some of our special education students. The special education teachers we currently have, uh, grades, I was making sure all their IEP minutes are met. These are the students that need extra time above and beyond their IEP minutes, um, for literacy and for math. So that is what I'm proposing, the other, the teaching part of the dean would do. We currently have what we call permanent intimate and substitute teachers. Um, each building is allowed to have those and those individuals are hired, um, with determined days per month. So they know they get ten days, then they're guaranteed, and then we call them in on the days that, um, they're not scheduled. And what we don't have, and I'm proposing, are permanent intimate and paraprofessional substitutes. So sometimes it's difficult to get substitutes from paraprofessionals. I'm asking for two para-substitutes. Uh, I found a need this year where one of my paraprofessionals was out ill and she also does personal care for students in our substantial separate programs, some toileting needs. And if that person is not there, I need somebody that can take over that role. So by proposing the permanent intimate and para-substitutes, I could have a new part of, um, that particular assignment. So if somebody comes in, they have to go into one of my learning centers, um, they would know, it would be, it's had the possibility of doing personal care. And, um, I do have a retirement that I'm aware of, grade four, I'm a grade four teacher, so I will need that position replaced in order to maintain our class size. So those are the staffing needs I have. Um, and I've given you on the second sheet, um, what our current enrollment looks like for grades three and four of class size. We have, um, regular education classes on the left. I have students in our substantial separate programs who are integrated into those classes for a various amount of time during the day. They do come with a paraprofessional to be with them. And then on the right-hand side, when those students are integrated, that's the total number that would be in that particular classroom. And then the, the bottom boxes, I just kind of break it down to keep track of the students. So for grade three, we have a hundred and sixty-six students right now. Grade four, we have a hundred and ninety-two. So there's three hundred and fifty-eight students at Minot Forest. And then the page behind it is looking at what the projection would be for next year. That's taking into account, the second graders that will be coming into third grade. We are looking at a hundred and fifty-five students. And our third grade going into fourth grade would be a hundred and sixty-six. So, we're looking at three hundred and twenty-one students as well. Any questions on either the staffing or the enrollment?
Where are you physically located?
In the middle school. So, when you walk into the middle school and there's the office lobby, if you take a right, there's a wing. It's kind of a T. There's a wing on the right-hand side called the D corridor. So, Minut Forest is in the D corridor with two classes and the main corridor. We're a school within a school. All right, then, looking through our particular line items.
So, how are your pages organized? Do they have this, you know, the same order?
It should be, if you go to, they have just this page, so.
All right. So, building, security, installation, maintenance contracted. I took, we did have two thousand dollars in this account. So, let me preface my budget by saying, I'm in a unique position because I don't have a building, per se. So, some of the costs may not apply to us this year because we own the middle school. Not to say that when we get out of the middle school, they may have to transfer over. So, I'm going to pause, I'd like to stand out. So, some of the accounts I may have transferred where I thought I saw a particular need. So, building, security, installation, and maintenance. I did deduct the two thousand that was in this account and moved it to building supplies because right now, being at the middle school, they have their security cameras and everything in place. So, I didn't feel that was an area that I had to add to. And that also goes to the next one, building, security, installation, and maintenance. I just, I moved that. Next one is computer supplies. So, of the forty-three hundred in this particular account, we have toner that we need for the fax machines that we have at Minut Forest. The secretary, myself, and the assistant principal have various printers that toner goes for that as well. This is not toner for the clapping machine because that's part of the contract. We have document cameras that were purchased for staff several years ago by PTA, and they're starting to, they need, we need to start replacing them because it's starting to glow a little bit.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I just don't know what goes on.
Yes, so a document camera, it faces the camera and it shines down on the page, and then it projects, it projects it onto the screen, yeah. So, the teacher can be writing and it's projected right away onto the various screens that they have. Ink for the various printers that we have, we have black and white printers. And for the projectors, which is different, a lot of the bulbs have decided to glow, so we wanted to put some money there so that we have the replacement bulbs. Computer upgrade software, I don't know if you have that one, that doesn't exist anymore. Custodial supplies. This is the various information, supplies that are needed for the day-to-day operation of a school. The gloves they use, paper towels that they use, Kleenex, trash bags, ice melt, all of their cleaning chemicals and supplies that they need. When we first went over to the middle school, we brought over things that we had. We used some of their materials, we bought the materials to replace what we used. But it's still an area that we still have to supply, even though we're in that particular building.
So, there's going to be two separate, so it'd be ice melt for middle school, ice melt for Minut? Would be two completely separate, same thing?
Yeah. There's different paths we can open that the custodians will, you know, help with, whatever gets that, so. Pencils and paper. This is my major account where we purchase all of our supplies. Our bid list items, our pencils, our folders, our scissors, our glue, markers. The various unified arts, I like to give a certain amount to purchase items that they may need. In technology, the students need earbuds for MCAS testing. And we have to make sure we have those because many students have that as an accommodation. So, we purchase those for MCAS-related purposes and assessment. Color paper for our newsletters. We buy agendas, like notebooks for students so that they can write their homework in. It's a great communication piece, parents can write a note if they need to be to the teacher and so forth. We provide every student one particular laminated folder to start off the year for homework going back before. And then we adopted the middle school use of having a hall pass. So, it's a plastic card and there's paper inside of it, and the students are signing out what time they're going to the lab, what time they're returning, and so forth. So, the major part of that is the bid list item, the agenda. So, that takes up a huge chunk of paper and pencils and various supplies that we'll need to replace over the year. Instructional equipment supplies. So, this is purchasing, we have whiteboards that are interactive, so the teacher can touch it. They have special pens, they can write on the board. So, we are replacing the whiteboard pens. We have some science materials to go along with Project Lead the Way. And then actually purchasing the projectors when we need to. So, I have two different accounts that that comes from. See, that is LCD bulbs. Let's see, building, maintenance, other expenditure. So, this is various fees or workshops if the custodians have to go for a particular training. I didn't want to eliminate this particular account. We're always encouraging them to seek professional development on their own. But in the past, they used to go for their specialist training as well. We don't, luckily, need to have that this year at the middle school. But it's there for them if they go to a workshop and they have travel. That's the account that that would come from. Oh, it's done. Maintenance of building contracted services. This is all about various contractors we might have to call in, plumbing. There's been some plumbing issues already at the middle school. We have one set of bathrooms that boys in grades three and four use and one set of bathrooms the girls use. So, they're going through a lot of supplies and we have to call in some plumbers from time to time. Electricians, our heating, any type of glass repair that we have to do, welding. The custodians have accounts of Home Depot, they need to get supplies there, same with lots of hardware. And our phone service that we contract with, so if we need to have an additional phone put in, if we're having any difficulty or without voicemail, this would be the particular account that we use. So, anytime we have to call a contractor, that's what we're using it for. That's like one of our major accounts for maintenance.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Just looking at custodial and pencils and paper and comparing the Minut with the middle school, are these numbers being coordinated somehow?
I don't, no, because it's two separate buildings and two separate needs.
You have two separate accounts and you have two separate contracts?
Yeah, we're a school within a school, so my head custodian is if it's anything, an issue in the D or the E corridor, we're taking that on ourselves. So, if we have to call in a plumber for like the toilets that I just mentioned, then that's coming out of our budget because that's the part of the building that we occupy. Paper and pencils, where I'm purchasing things for the elementary students. Middle school, we have their own that they're purchasing for the middle school students.
For example, I mean, paper and pencils, and I can understand that, you have, you have, yours is twenty-two thousand, middle school is eleven thousand. Look at instructional equipment supplies, middle school is much higher. But when you get down to things like maintenance of building contracted services, yours is twenty-eight thousand and the middle school is eleven thousand.
Sometimes we have various accounts that we interchange depending on the accounts that we pull from to pay the particular item. So, and like, as I said, I'm also in that unique position where I don't know what to expect for breakdowns. We know we have a roof unit that's down that has to be replaced. It just so happens it's in my area of the building, so that is probably going to be a costly repair. We're trying to get estimates on that, so we're trying to build in the money to.
I'm concerned about that because Tracy just explained that she's spending two hours a day trying to get HVAC contractors in and come up with estimates. You shouldn't be doing the same thing. We need to be having those things coordinated.
She, no, she's coordinating that part of it, but part of the money may have to come from, we share costs as well. So, part of the money is coming from my account to help pay for it. But, yeah, I'm not going in and doing the, what my head custodian is not getting the bids for the various HVAC, but the money's coming from part of my.
I just hope that these are coordinated through a central, and I would think that our accountant would, would work on that and would assess you one-third perhaps of whatever the total cost is.
Absolutely, and the two head custodians talk to each other, so the lights that we have out on my side of the building on the outside, he already has spoken to Mr. Hamilton about that, so they know what we're replacing, especially in our area. So, there's communication that is happening.
We shouldn't be going out for separate bids on everything.
No, we're not. That part is coordinated.
All right.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I am going to have to leave, I have previous information, but thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming, David.
Thank you.
Maintenance of building supplies. So, this particular account, when I look back, we're using, replacing the filters with HVAC units that did happen to be the ones above in my area. Baggies and belts that are needed, supplies to ace, paint, tool, bolts. It's a little bit different from the other maintenance planes. So, I have a small amount in there for building supplies. Many, Minut equipment contracted. This is hiring contractors to fix items such as the blower motors and the classrooms that they may need, any boiler or heating issues, or replacing, repairing walkie-talkies. We replace our walkie-talkies every year. As far as heating issues, it's adjusting temperatures and so forth. So, if it's an equipment issue where we have to contract out, that comes in that particular count. Equipment repair. Again, various items that are needed to replace, repair equipment as it breaks down. Minut maintenance of equipment supplies. Broken lights, key fobs, the supplies that are needed for the backpack vacuums that the custodians wear, items they may need for their snow blowers, the waxing machines to do the floors. That's where that particular, which is what it's going to come from. Then we have Minut network and telecommunications. Yeah, we, I took that out again because of the fact we're at the middle school and right now, the network is up and working. Minut instructional other. So, there's some other supplies that we may need to purchase that don't fall into the paper or pencil account. This is where I'd like to be able to get the scholastic news for teachers, they've been requesting that. Supplies that are needed, whether it's for our special education classrooms, some of the, when we have flexible groupings with regular students and our special ed students that join, we want to make sure if you have to purchase anything, we have that there. Minut other instructional services, this is our field trip account. So, we have to purchase buses for various practices that'll go above and beyond with the PTA supplies for us. That's what I use that for. Let's see, principal supplies. In this account, any type of ops supply that we would purchase, thumb drives, ink, staples. We print our school handbooks from this particular account. The letterhead we get, the envelopes that say Minut Forest, post cards that we will mail out to tell the teacher, the, sorry, the teachers, to tell their families what teacher their child's going to have. Life cards that we have for our Q and F folders, the national school forms, our discipline forms that we have. Report card paper, we might get special paper for that in envelopes. And we have six reporting sessions, so that comes out of principal supplies. Principals other expenditures. So, conferences for, I have budgeted for two administrators for now. Membership dues for various agencies, ASCDs and membership that we've taken. If there's any mileage that goes along with the conferences. And CPI training, I'm the CPI certified instructor for the district, so I teach nonviolent crisis prevention. And sometimes I have to go to workshops myself and I have to keep up my certification, so that is all part of that.
And that comes out of Minut Forest, not out of the district?
Yeah.
Special ed if you can.
Yes. Special ed purchases like the workbooks I need, what this is like for my certification. Minut testing and assessment supplies, that's what we might need for various assessments that we do. It's a small amount in there, but we do keep it there. Textbooks and related media supplies. This is using our intervention materials, so we make literacy buckets. We're very fortunate to be continuing our work of caring for us there. So, we make a lot of the materials that need for students so that they can have growth. The license for Project Lead the Way, which is a science piece that we joined at the middle school. We have other licenses like MobiMax, various software that we have to purchase, so I took it out of that account. Elementary professional development supplies, it's a small amount, but it's there if we need to purchase anything or what may be needed for early release days when we have staff training. Minut maintenance of grounds contracted. So, if we have to have somebody come in because it's related to the grounds issue, for instance, I want to have contractors give us an estimate on tiring the area behind the middle school, which is the other test course because of the grassy area. Parents drop off their children in the morning for the off-school time, and when it rains, it's a complete puddle in mud. So, I want to be able to possibly tire that because it is an area that they also snow blow. Heating. I don't know what's going to happen with heating, to be honest, because it's our first year in the building.
Where do you get that, who do you get that figure from? How is that concerning because the whole, I mean, the whole building is heated? How is it allocated to what, to corridors, D and E, is that?
Yeah, so, it's a portion of what the heating bill would be, so we would take it from, for both.
So, again, is this by student or by Murphy?
I left it as what it was last year. It could be less.
So, the two numbers together are basically what it was last year, just divided into the number of students in Minut Forest, the number of students.
Or squared footage, I'll choose it.
Well, that's what I was saying, it's by students.
By students.
Yeah.
By student.
Yeah.
Well, last year, I mean, this is the first year, obviously.
Right, so we'll know better next year, kind of a while in time right now.
So, it's making this process interesting.
It is, it is. Just someone knows.
So, we're flipping back and forth saying, okay, is the two numbers together the same?
Right.
What variance from last year when the whole building was?
I mean, for most, I think they've kept it the same because we don't have a trend to look back yet.
Right.
Until this whole year is complete, then we.
And then we'll have a better understanding of the number of students.
Right, yeah.
Copy at least, we have three copies and they are used every day, all day. Minut business class internet, I did keep that there for any internet issues that we have. That comes right from our tech department. And other than utilities, that's the last account that I have.
Utilities the same?
Same, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, some, some numbers are like. Just out of curiosity, some, some numbers are like rounded off, they're near a thousand and others are to the penny, is that?
Yeah, I usually try to round them up, but some of them, like the copy at least, that's a contract, so it's pretty specific.
So if it's specific, it's to the penny, if it's just kinda like a guess to me, it's rounded up.
Then I round it up, yeah. Alright, no questions, then I'll, Jill is ready.
Yes. Alright, so just to kinda pick up, what we left off at the last, you know, when you did the school improvement plan, and I say, how do we maintain the success that you've been having here? I mean, you've got, you're doing really well, you've got a few spots that you know we have to work on, but how do we, is what you're asking for here, does that help continue your success?
Yes, because the, if I can get the dean and have the two to three periods of addressing, giving extra time to special ed students, those are the scores that we wanna try to raise. I maintain money in the budget for the intervention materials that we have. So we just had fast testing and progress monitoring, and we're seeing some great growth with our students. So that's why it's the first year I'm asking for a reading interventionist, because what we're doing in-house with our consultant is working.
First year you're asking for what?
That I'm not asking for a reading interventionist, because what we're doing currently is working.
And what you're doing, instead of interventionist, is what?
Kerry Thurston.
Oh, no, yeah. The work by Kerry Thurston, our literacy consultant, she looks at our data, she's helping the teachers get together all the intervention materials that they need to do.
Is she like a de facto interventionist?
She's actually not an interventionist really, it's high impact instruction.
Yeah.
It's how we've married, if you were to imagine it as anything else, right from the start, we sort of took on the Finland's approach to educating students. So we start when they're very young, providing them with the necessary services that they need. And so in order to carry that through, because the students at mine it were not part of the original group, we're also integrating those services through mine it, and we're seeing some amazing results from that work. And so teachers are flexibly grouping, we're looking at how to service students with what they need for that time, and she comes in to help us identify exactly. Actually, she's training our teachers to be acutely aware of if a student presents this way in a particular area, she has the right strategy to match, which is lacking in all of education to be honest, is that what is it that you do to fix this problem? And she's able to identify those exact things that need to happen, and those are the things that are making a difference for our kids, so seems to be working so far.
Absolutely.
But I'll report it again, school committee as usual, get that information.
And number three on your requests here, you know, with the, with the retirement of a grade four teacher at the end of the school year, I am requesting that that position be replaced to maintain the current eight, eight grade four classrooms. Now that's, that's like, I don't think that should be in there, that should just be in get, I mean, you've got, that's your highest grade, put that your highest number, so I mean, what would the class size be?
I don't want to make chances.
Right.
It's an area you need.
No, so, I mean, I, personally, I, I'll be asking you, and I'll be making sure that I won't, I won't approve a budget personally if it doesn't have that. So if you were to replace that third item with something else, what else would you like?
I prioritize what I felt I needed and what we currently have space for in the building, because that's another issue right now is space. I think we're okay with what I have right here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, and another kind of special report, just like, what's, what is, what is T for, what does that mean?
It's my coding. So I have students that are coming from the therapeutic learning center. So that's one of our special ed sub separate programs. So there's four students who are integrated for various times throughout the day, they're not there all day, and all four may not be there at the same time. But if they are, like Mr. Roulette, potentially if they have twenty-five students for that particular period, with a parent there to support. And then there are times the students go back to their program for something else.
And hence the asterisks.
Yes.
And L, what's L?
Learning center. So I have three substantially separate programs. T is the therapeutic learning center, L is the learning center for students who may have cognitive delays. UL is the upper learning center. So I have three students who are in the middle school four, five program. We were very creative this year, we took advantage of the fact that we are in the middle school, we could be flexible with our programming. And the A is our autism program.
Okay. And now, there's a question to Suprenta or maybe Joyce, just, all of these materials, will they be on the websites, if people can follow along, if they, if they watch it on TV?
Yeah, we'll put everything up.
Okay, excellent.
So I have a question, so I am looking at between middle and mine it and looking to see where we may be seeing some of the savings. And this question isn't necessarily with you, it's probably at a district level, so is that something that we will be able to see? I, I'd like to see that, I'd like to see, well, we expected to save this much by saving mine it in this area, and so far we've saved this much. You know, like you said, some things, because I know it's all right, heating and other surfaces, but I would like to be able to see that.
We probably will measure that until we completed the year, so we can see how the budgets ended. It's kinda hard to predict mid-year.
Well, it's hard to predict, but we can certainly know what our expenses are at least halfway through the year. So I think I, I asked, I've asked this question before, Susan, so before we closed mine it, we had a, a budget. And then after we decided to close mine it, now that's a new budget with some savings in it. So I just wanna be able to see that we are actually realizing those savings. So I wouldn't wanna wait till the end of the year, is that, I don't think that's a reason, but I'd like at least halfway through the year to be able to say, well, this is what we expected to save, and this is what we're saving so far, so yes, we're on target, or we're not on target today, but no.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is, when you, when we're coming in and close mine it, what our potential savings were. So what we'll do is sit down and figure out where we're at with those expenses today, to see what kind of track and where we think that we.
Exactly.
Trending, yeah.
Yes, and we had some upfront, upfront costs when we had to move into the middle school, the phone system, the paging system, things like that.
You anticipated that as far as the cost.
Yeah, somewhat, yeah. Yeah.
And yet, totally, you know, you had to pass that.
Right, right. So some of that we won't have next year, because it will, it will all be in place.
And Susan, I understand what I'm asking, that you weren't here when we made those decisions, so I, I know.
You know, and I think one of the other things that we'll have for you is the comparison, so what we're working at is comparing per student. So if I have X amount of administrative staff, what's my student ratio for that building? And then I'm gonna look at our, our social emotional staff and do a comparison. So at the high school, if I have six hundred and ninety-one students, and I know I have X amount of social emotional support, what's my per student, per pupil ratio? And then we'll show you throughout the buildings, I think that's kinda an interesting, we'll start looking at, if we do have money to put resources, where's the greatest need, and that kinda determines the logical steps. Work, waiting for work on it, I think the guidance, some show will find the information. And try to measure where we are today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right here? Good morning, everyone. I'm just happy to be here, not to let you track us out in parking lot at Deacon School, because it was very busy. I have some folders to pass on Monday. Oh, thank you. Thanks. Is this nice? Yes. Do you want one?
I'm gonna make sure.
I was gonna say, do you want one?
Right here.
Are you ready? Well, thank you for having me here today to talk to you a little bit about what we need at Deacon School. We'll begin with staffing, so I just wanted to show you the folder I have there for you, if you could open it up. On the left hand, you will see the current staff I have, that's just a list of who I have, you can see I have quite a significant number of staffs to support our students. But we are the youngest generation in our district, so we do need that support. On the right hand side are my projections for next year, so I have my class size for this year, followed by two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty enrollment predictions with class size. After reviewing this information, I just wanted to tell you just right up, what I probably, well, I know what I will need, definitely is two additional grade two teachers. Now, my staff is preschool, I have five teachers, that will stay. I have ten kindergarten teachers, that will stay. I have ten first grade teachers this year, that will go down by one next year, to my kindergarten enrollment of one seventy. So that will go down one. And then in grade two is my largest bubble of approximately two hundred students. So my grade two staff is going from seven teachers to nine teachers, because we have an enrollment of about one fifty-six to one sixty, it fluctuates, I just had a new grade two coming in today. So I only needed seven staff members. Next year, we're growing by forty students in that, so it's going to be a plus two. I do have a plan for that, really, that is going to be really an additional one staff member. Any questions about that, Suprenta?
Wonderful. And then if we just wanna go line by line, I do have to say honestly, honestly, the one, the areas I look at at Deacon is maintaining the building as it stands. And I'm budgeting for a maintenance plan that is contingent on a lot of factors and unpredictability. Deacon can, we run a fine ship there, we have wonderful custodials, we have a lot of great relationships with our contractors, but you just never know what could go awry at Deacon School. I have underground plumbing, I have a lot of electrical pieces, I have a lot of broken windows, happens because of the windows and how they lie. So maintenance of the building is a crucial component of this year's budget, and also just instructional, maintaining the instructional. We've got the program going on literacy, our data results show that we are really, really making headway with reading. So I wanna support that program of that high instruction. So would you like to go by line by line here, really quickly? Alright, when we begin, I have Deacon's textbooks there, so I'll just show it up. Okay, Deacon's computer supplies, I did increase that, let me tell you a little bit about that increase. I no longer have a computer lab at Deacon School, it was cut out when preschool came to Deacon. Therefore, I really have to make sure I maintain the laptops. I also have to make sure that during our assessments, which are so crucial during FAS, that we are up and running in all classrooms. My grade two has one-one Chromebooks, they all have to have headphones, because otherwise they can't hear the instruction, they can't take the FAS test. There's a lot of to it, so headphones and adapters are huge, making sure those laptops are functioning, making sure that we are supporting every piece of technology within the building, ink, toner, all of that subset. It's gonna be important for us to have colored printers, I really advocate for that because of their token boards, and color does a lot for those students. Questions about the computer supplies? The next line, I have the Deacon's custodial supplies, we did add to this, the reason, we have more staff. Deacon School is an addition, additional grade at Deacon School, so Mr. Santos has requested that he have more funding in that area for the expenses needed. Questions about that? Heating is what it is, we, you know, we'll keep it down to a minimal as much as we can, we don't wanna freeze our little ones. Utilities, yes.
What, sorry, how big is Deacon?
Well, I don't have the square footage, but I can tell you that from, from my office to E, it's one-fourth of a mile. We make a lot of traction, so if you're into walking and you have your Fitbit, Deacon's is the place to go, because there's a lot of walking, it is a big school.
I can tell you, Deacon's is sixty-eight thousand twenty-eight square feet.
And the high school's what?
The high school is two thousand two hundred twenty-three, no, two hundred twenty-three thousand two square feet.
So is that just the difference in the efficiency of the newer building?
Middle school's one hundred twenty-two thousand three hundred ninety square.
Well, yeah, I was just asking because it's more money to heat than much smaller square.
Well, the high school is too sore, it's Deacon's one, so.
Spread out.
Yeah. Poor age. Just wondering.
And the little ones, we do keep it a little bit smaller.
And put a deck on the bigger ones.
Yeah, the high. Yeah, the high. Yeah, look, okay.
Deacon's pencils and paper, I budgeted, you can see that two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, I think it's approximately a little under fourteen thousand. This year I budgeted for an extra one thousand five hundred, again, this is due to the preschool. I have to buy a few more pieces, you know, got construction paper, glue sticks to pay for. Instructional equipment, I did add here a bit, and I taught about, I have to be creative with my instructional spaces at Deacon School currently. I really do, I have a lot of students in a limited amount of space, and it requires me to be creative about how we utilize the space and the equipment and supplies that we use. So I'm looking at partitions, I'm looking at just making sure that our students have a great place to learn, so I did add to that. And here comes the maintenance piece, I do wanna talk about Deacon's equipment contracted. I didn't budget enough last year, we went, I looked because Ms. Owen was kind enough to show us all of where we were over budgeted. That's an area I was over budgeted, we just had to have many contracted services coming in, plumbing, electricity. I, I said, the windows didn't sound like much, but it is, because I have to get Vortex in to do an asbestos report, to do all of that, to make sure that when we take the windows out, the asbestos is not there. So it's costly just for a window to go at Deacon School. And because they're low lying, when sometimes the maintenance is simple as mowing the lawn. I have baseball fields, they just get broken, every year we have about two. So that's, that there. And plumbing, again, my plumbing's underneath at Deacon, and we were just getting a lot of plumbing clogs that are so deep, that's becoming quite an expenditure. Questions so far about maintenance? I'm gonna take it down, I, the network server is what it is. Deacon's instructional other, these are just for the PDs that I go to or that other teachers may go to. It also reflects, oh, no, that's instructional, excuse me. Deacon's instructional other, let me just go to my slide, I know what this is, I apologize, I misspoke. That is working to supply for all of our specialists. And we have a new class called Drama this year, we're wicked excited about, just to support our literacy and support our school improvement plan of Voice, it's going spectacular, so I budgeted for her class as well as power and phys ed, so that's where Deacon's instructional other is. Questions so far? And Deacon's principal supplies, that is for the handbooks, that's for letterhead and all of the supplies that I use, especially over the summertime, getting ready for opening day. And then Deacon's principal other expenditures is exactly what I was talking about before with the PD and such. Okay, Deacon's testing and assessment supplies. These are just our running records, our DRAs that we provide. Screening is new this year, so we're going to use a screening tool, we think that we're going to look at, at least Dr. Schwan is not going to look at that. So, it's our screening tools, our copiers, substitutes. Any questions for anything else? Yes, nothing.
How were you able to save money?
What's that?
How were you able to save nineteen thousand bucks?
I just, I only purchased what we need to purchase. I, you know, it's simple, I just think that you just have to look at what's coming across your desk when you sign for the POs and making sure that we are spending what we need to spend to keep this school alive and well, our students happy and flourishing.
If you look at utilities and the trend, the budget was about one hundred and ten, we're spending about sixty to sixty-six, so we dropped that.
And where's that savings from? Like, why are we able to save so much?
That is, I don't know. I do, it might be just because we've had a higher number for a budget line, I don't know what it was last, I mean, the last, I mean, if you look at seventeen, eighteen, it was sixty-six.
Yeah.
And then we bumped it to one ten, I don't, I wasn't here, so I don't know why we bumped it.
So, no, actually saving or just adjusting.
Right.
We're adjusting it based on expenditures over the past few years.
Although we do try to save, of course.
And how is the new roof holding up?
Awesome. It's incredible. You've poured our lips better than it's ever looked. Between the new roof and the new floors. By the way, it looks better than it ever looked because we had so much damage to it. It's shiny now.
Is there any air conditioning at all in Deacon's?
Yes, we have units in certain classrooms, special ed classrooms, we have units, and there are a couple of units in each of the grades, just for students needing, in case it's on a five or four or something like that, we can have a student in there.
So, when you say units, it's like something in the window?
Exactly.
Yeah, it's not like.
They don't have any.
Yeah, that's why, yeah.
The school was built for central AC, but they never put it in, and that's why we have these low-lying windows the way they are because they're just not really suitable for air conditioning anyway to put any unit in, so it takes a crafty contractor.
So, I'm just going to repeat what I said to Scott and Tracy, just, it was the new school, you know, that they're looking to get. On social media, one thing I keep hearing often is, you know, that we need to make, we're not doing enough to maintain what we have now. Does Deacon's need anything like right now, like what's in the capital plan that we need to do to keep Deacon's up and useful?
Okay, a few things, and one thing is, remember the generator that we budgeted before, talked about that?
Yeah.
So, that's the capital plan, so that will be purchased because we need it.
Yeah, but that's this year, right?
Yep, that's this year.
So, for next year, what do you need?
Well, I hope that generator will be there, working. Next year, I'll tell you what, my outside conditions are rough, like my curbing, so we're working on the curbing, we're working on the parking lot still. I have a half of the area which is just dirt. I want my children traveling into the school safely, and I just need walkways and pathways to make sure that happens along with parking, so, and curvature, my curbs are in the front of the bus are cracked and broken. Outside shingling is another area where we've just got to look at because I got a lot of shingles coming down. And one other area that I'm going to look at for next year is that the roof's doing very well, snow, when it melts off, it comes down in sheets. So, we want to make sure that we're, when we have the new sidewalk, we also have, and Mr. Santos's budget for it, I think it's relatively expensive, like eighteen thousand dollars or so, is to have what they call like a snow shield on the side of deep corridor, which is where our parking lot is, so when that snow doesn't come down, it doesn't come right down on you.
Yeah, right.
So, it's a safety, right? Right, so, once I do have, I'm envisioning a nice walkway, you know, we might not only be there for a few years, so I don't know, but if we had, if we end up having to stay, I envision a nice walkway for my students and parents to walk by the train tracks through school and then that sort of, so, those are the type of things that I look at.
And how are the modulars that were existing holding up?
There's leaks in there, the top of the roofing leaks, once in a while, we have to replace a lot of tiles because of leaking, it's not, it will, you know, they were, what were they, a ten-year plan, a five-year plan, and they've been there since like nineteen ninety-seven, so, they're holding up well for the amount of time we've used them, I have to say. Heating works, AC works.
So, if the school didn't go through, like, would we, would we be looking to do any work on those modulars?
Yeah, we would probably look at the roofing, we'd have to walk on top of that roof and check it out. That would be my number one is the roofing.
Just the roof.
And the rugs, the carpeting.
And the rugs.
Yep, roofing and carpeting, if it didn't go through.
And now, I saw you had the little modular outside, they'll separate, so who's in there?
Well, I just, nobody yet, but that's because the electricity just got in, heating and air conditioning, and the electricity was just finished. So, I have a plan, but I just didn't want to, I don't want to say because I really want to contact, but I do think that we have a couple of specialists that will go out there. I do know that my department chair is willing to travel out there, so I do have people who would like to stay out there in our area.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Depending on how today's vote goes, will that really change, anything other than what you'd expect? I just think we'll need to, in the future, when I say, when I think about the maintenance of Deacon's School, we'll really have to do some looking, just looking around and making sure we've got what we need. I have sixteen carpeted classrooms still that are aged. I'd have to, I've got to get that carpet out of there if we keep that, keep our school going.
I'm going to suppose in the mod, of the modulars.
And that doesn't include the modulars, that includes, that includes just the main frame.
Okay. How's your kitchen all going?
Awesome. I haven't heard anything, so, no news is good news out here. Well, I thank you for your time here today, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
I think curriculum, it's not on the, on the schedule.
Oh, break, sorry, there's a break and then there's curriculum.
You guys in the break?
I created a one-page document basically to follow, hopefully, it helps you to see where the, how the money's spent, side of the line items, I guess. What I did was I looked at the different areas and then I kind of put them in the specific areas that I thought were conducive to what we do here. Shall we close this?
She just went to the ladies' room.
Okay, so, basically, the amount requested is the same amount that was requested from last year, and the areas that are addressed from my office are curriculum evaluation, assessment, and professional development. So, for curriculum, with the Naviance program that Scott was talking about, we went into a six-year, five or six-year agreement with Naviance, fairly expensive, and so what we did was split it out into thirds, the middle school carries a third, the high school carries a third, and my office carries a third to cover that expense. Turnitin is a plagiarism software that we use.
The burn events.
Yeah. We have test banks for various subjects that are software-dependent, manage back, which is a way for students to manage their ID. And because the Envision contract is up for the Envision Math Program two through six, and we have three more years of use of that, it's an online math program that we've been using, I would like to look into a curriculum software integration tool with that money that was normally spent for Envision Math. And we have Envision Math now grades two through eight. I always put in fifteen thousand to an account for schools in case we need textbooks because that doesn't seem to be a line that's, you know, it's always one of those lines, right? So, it, so I always put money in there in case schools need some extra textbooks and supplies and such, and it's used. The office supplies are, mine are sixteen hundred dollars, and it's for a number of different office supplies that are needed for the work of our office. There's a support for continuous improvement of curriculum stipends, that's fourteen thousand dollars, and that goes to work done above and beyond the school day to have teachers meet in groups and work on their curriculum units. And the twenty-two thousand seven hundred is for different fees for IV, DP, MYP, and all the other areas that we're using, and that provides us with a huge amount of access to curriculum units from across the world. So, when we're looking to create a unit of instruction, now we have access to all of those other units and can then implement those into what we're doing as a tool, and it also includes some professional development and things like that. So, overall, in the curriculum area, it's about ninety-two thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Is this just expenses or some salary in here or?
Well, the fourteen thousand are stipends.
Okay.
The rest are expenses. And it's all for schools to support them. All of these that are mentioned are out, they're not in my office. We have an evaluation software that's also a profession, we've transferred all of our professional development onto, we used to have a separate professional development software and an evaluation software, now everything is in the same area. It's called Teach Point, and that way, teachers can actually track the professional development points, they can add to what they've been doing if it's outside of the, for this, for example, the summer, they made a graduate course, they get that information, they can post it on to this particular software. We have department meetings with work that gets included in our professional development, and everything that we do is tracked using Teach Point, along with the evaluation tool, and that's seven thousand. Assessment, we're very fortunate in that Title I helps us a great deal for mine at Deacon's, for the assessment software that we use, which is the FAST. The one place it doesn't cover is grade five, and so that money for FAST is in that, it's fourteen hundred dollars, and then Survey Monkey is the device we use to create and send out all of the surveys that we gather, and that's two hundred and fifty dollars.
To Hergen.
Yes.
Hergen.
It's good, yeah, it's good. It's also completely anonymous, which I think people were nervous about, the Google inform, using that as a tool for survey information, there was a lot of tension around that, and we really want to hear from people without having, without, if people want to say something and they don't want to be identified, this is the right tool for that purpose. And then there's professional development, the state requires that we provide all new teachers with training, we're happy to do that, and then we also stipend for mentors to take those new teachers under their wing and help them throughout the year with a number of different areas. We have some leadership training, other staff training, we have a course for anyone who may be evaluating teachers called Analyzing Teachers for Student Results, it's required, it's contractual obligation, mileage and other professional development that may come up, that's not otherwise specified, and then we are required also to offer English language learner, this is also state, and special education training for staff to receive their professional development points, they have to receive fifteen professional development points with English language learners and fifteen PDPs for special education to become re-licensed every five years. So, that's required, and then IB training. That's a total of eighty-two thousand six hundred and ninety dollars of my budget, and then supplies for any trainers that might come in, is around about a cost of four thousand dollars, and then any professional development that our staff does, we like to support them with any extra Post-its and markers and anything that they use for professional development. We have fees for UMA, for being a member of the Massachusetts Association of Superintendents as well as some more professional development opportunities through Bridgewater State University. So, that, the total for professional development, all included, is eighty-seven thousand five hundred and forty dollars, and then substitute teachers are lying that are in there to cover anyone. So, for example, if a teacher goes out to professional development, they need a substitute teacher, that money's put in there, so that's that money in that area. Very exciting.
So, I'm looking at this sheet, I'm looking at the line item at the same time, so, one did the line item about supplementary, supplementary program supplies.
Hold on, I have to go to that because I, oh, hold on here, hold on. Okay.
That went up quite a bit, so what, what is it happening? Sorry, I have to back you up here.
I know that there were some, a couple that were moved from one place to another because, so, for example, there was, did you already do that?
I wondered, right below it, it's like eight thousand dollars.
Right, it's just here, yes, so.
We moved that.
We moved that to the, to another line that was similar because it was used for that purpose, and I didn't need it in a separate account.
Okay.
For example.
Okay. I wondered that same thing because your, your end numbers matched out, where you were lower, a lot lower in one category.
That's because of that reason, so, and then there were a couple of accounts that just seemed redundant, so we had a lot of numbers, like, for example, there are all these accounts, and they have these numbers attached, depending upon what the number was, they're used for certain things, and you can keep accounting of that, but some of them were redundant, like, they both served the same purpose, but they were in two separate accounts, we merged the accounts. So, there are less, overall accounts, more targeted for what we actually do, which may look for some less, there'll be less or none in some accounts, and a greater number in another account, but it all balances the same number.
And you talked about Naviance at the middle school level, I've never heard it talked about at the middle school level, only at the high school level.
Well, there are a huge amount of resources for planning on the Naviance system, right? So, there are career inventory tools and personality inventory tools to see what career might be best for you, and interest and things like that. I think Tracy is starting to implement that more.
Okay, good.
Now, because I think it's really important that kids see what, if they want to be this, then this is the path that they need to take, or if they want to do this in their life, then they need to make sure that they're paying attention over here, and so there are a whole bunch of tools available to them that need, that have been explored but need to be explored even more, so that's why, and it's specific for middle school, so.
Good, no, it's a great tool, and I'm glad that we have it, it's a little more reusable than I think.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, shockingly being that I took and spent the most money, I'm like so easy right now, so we, nice and quick. I passed out just kind of the same thing that Dr. Schwan passed out, but kind of a quick summary, just giving.
Just giving you a list of special education numbers.
I didn't.
These numbers were pulled out of our ESPED system, so they're not always one hundred percent accurate in that system, because it depends on the, where a child is in the evaluation process. So we pull up with active IEP, so these numbers might be off just a little bit. Our ESPED system is not as succinct as other systems, and we're actually exploring the possibility of changing ESPED to a different system this upcoming summer, so that we have something that kind of gives more accurate numbers. So you can see our preschool, all the way down to our out-of-district numbers right now. I will go through all the lines for you. This budget reflects an overall savings of about three, three hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars in out-of-district tuition. We have no line increases from our fiscal year nineteen, with the exception of the private residential tutoring line, and that has increased by a hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars, because we have one child that is requiring a much higher level of service than we can provide for him in district, so he needed to move to a private school setting for his level of disability. That's why you see that line go up. Our collaborative tuition line has a decrease of four hundred and thirty-four thousand forty-three dollars, and that's primarily due to our ability to kind of assess the out-of-district collaborative programs and work with them to build our own program, and up to the point where we're able to return students to their home schools. And then we have, I'm actually going to go over this, and then I'll talk about staffing needs throughout the district. So if you go to the first page, you'll see that the tuition to non-public went up, like I said, about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Collaborative tuition's dropped by four hundred and thirty-four thousand forty-three dollars. All of our other lines have either dropped or remained the same. So under medical health services, we have to have a contract with a school physician who reviews any information that comes in on our students and acts as a consult to the district on that. That's just a set fee every year. We, under the umbrella of student services, I support nursing and guidance as well as related services. So we have nursing system supplies in there. And also, we have one-to-one nursing, which is that big number that you saw, the ninety-five thousand, it was ninety last year. We do have three students that require one-to-one nursing, and we contract that out through local agencies. Under home instruction, SPED, summer school, the regular day home instruction, we do cover in student services, tutoring of all students in our district, not only special education. So that first twenty thousand dollars is our general education student tutoring. When students are out for medical or other reason, mental health reason, we provide the tutoring and use that line. The student services home instruction is any of our students who are home who do have an IEP or receive related services, and we're able to bring those services to them in the home. And the extended school year program is clearly our extended school year for our special education students who experience significant regression over the school year. We're keeping that at the same, and I'm hopeful that through streamlining, we'll be able to maybe cut that a little bit for fiscal year twenty-one. Under medical therapeutic services, this covers a variety of different things. This covers any type of medical equipment that we need to purchase for our students, including standards, foyer lifts, to get students out of wheelchairs and onto a toilet or a changing table, which are quite expensive and need to be maintained, and we do have one at every building. I have to actually buy a new one right now, because the middle school's broke. It also includes our orientation and mobility, which is a service for students who are visually impaired or legally blind. And it also covers any outside evaluations that we might have to do, either at the request of a parent for an independent eval, or if we feel that we don't have the level of expertise needed to gather information on eligibility or needs of a student, then we will reach out to contract providers in the area, agencies that can do those evaluations for us. A good example is a risk evaluation, which we usually send out to St. Anne's Hospital or to REIT's Collaborative, to assess a child's risk of harming either themselves or others in a school setting. So that's something that we frequently have to do, and that's the line that this comes out of. District-wide leadership, the student services special ed supplies, materials, that's all of the materials that we use. A lot of it ends up being protocols for testing for some of our evaluators, some curriculum materials. We do have Wilson materials that need to be updated, Lyndem Bell and Orton-Gillingham materials, also the updated trainings for all of those stuff, the materials that they require for that. Student service other expenditure, three thousand dollars, that's kind of the, my everything else line. I keep it at about three thousand dollars. We spent a little bit more than that last year, though we had a couple of unique situations last year as well. Under our instructional materials, books, periodic reference, each school building has their own supply line for this. Some years we utilize it, some years we don't, but it gives me availability if we need a special item for a student, like an indestructible iPad case, or some kind of adaptive equipment for a computer, or for the few that need adaptive utensils, cups, forks. So that provides me the ability to purchase that. Under psychological services, again, every building has their own psych services line item. They utilize that to purchase their testing protocols, so all of our students in special education need to be tested every three years for reevaluation and re-eligibility purposes, and they can be quite costly. So every building has its own line item for that, for purchasing those materials. Under other instructional services, I think too, the first line, SPED, teacher travel. We have a lot of teachers that go out to do testing, either educational testing, or psychologists will go out to do psychological testing on our out-of-district students. So that line item covers travel and mileage reimbursement for them to travel to some of these out-of-district placements, which can be quite far away. It also covers mileage reimbursement for any teachers or staff that go to any type of a conference or professional development. Our next line, contracted services, that is actually our ESPED, so that is our special education student information system. That is currently what we're paying per people basis, so that's a set amount, but we're remaining the same this year. Copier lease, the next line again, that's a set amount that's given to us in the contract. And then summer school supplies, just a general supply line. We didn't really use a lot of it last year, because we were trying to use up what we had at the moment, that we didn't take with us over to the middle school, so we didn't spend much last year, but I cut it in half, so that we make sure that we have enough to cover at least our general supplies for extended school year programming. Guidance and testing, again, we have it by school. We have the next line's testing and assessment, clerical supplies for all of the SPED secretaries, which we have one SPED secretary in each building. For D E G S, they have SPED clerical supplies, they're all broken down by school. And then instructional coordinators and team leaders, we place this two hundred dollars in there. This covers our instructional facilitator, so it covers our membership to the state parent, oh my god, advisory council, CPAC, it just left my head. That covers their membership with the state, and it also covers any flyers they might need printed, and it covers any other expenses they might have, and it also covers our cost to have an outside person, per reg, come into the parents' once a year and provide them with a parent rights seminar, that covers that cost as well. Under non-clerical, that five thousand dollars is all of the way I have in that a paraprofessional salary. This year I rolled into my general extended school year, just to kind of, like, exactly what Dr. Schwamme said, kind of get rid of some of those lines that were floating out there, kind of compacted it all into one, so that is pushed into another line. And then the PD SPED subs, anytime any of our teachers go to a, any kind of a conference, any kind of professional development or collaborative planning, we're able to cover substitutes for the classroom for them while they're out on that professional development. And that is it for that. And then the staffing increases that we're requesting, I've met with every principal individually. We're looking at an increase of a point three team chair at John de Beide Gis, an increase of a point two school psychologist at D E G S, an increase of a point three team chair at the middle school, an increase of a point five school psych at the middle school, which is something that we had to cut last year for budgetary reasons, and really is important and crucial that we get back into that building. An increase of a point two team chair at a high school to kind of help with the absorption of the eighth grade. Addition of a one point oh full-time special ed teacher at a high school, and an increase of a point five in our out-of-district coordinator. I think that still keeps us level.
How, what is the out-of-district coordinator position now, is it one point five?
And what was it last year? Is it a year before, a point five? We used to have a full-time one, but that was happened a couple years back.
What does IEP stand for?
Individualized Education Plan.
Could you help me paint a big picture here? Can you speak to what, basically, the sal, for special ed? The salaries, the expenses or supplies, and then maybe federal or state grants offsetting this, and how that works into?
Yeah, so, I mean, all of our special ed teachers and related service providers are on contracts. So they're either Unit A, B, or C contracts, for everything from clerical, paraprofessionals, the therapy assistants, and our service providers and teachers are all on that same salary, the teacher salary schedule. We do have a couple of people in on contracts, so, like, extreme specialists, like our B C, our board certified behavior, sorry, I don't want to frame a joke, board certified behavior analysts, we have two. One specializes in autism, one specializes in behaviors and trauma. Those two are on a different type of contract, so they make like a little bit of a step above what the other people would make, because they almost have a doctoral level of education, and state and national certifications. So it's a little bit different. Our operational budget, which is what you see here, our LEA budget, is basically funding the majority of what we do. We do take some of the tuitions that we have for out-of-district and fund them through our two forty grant. So we receive this, in the past, we've received a two forty, which is the general ITA grant for special ed, special education. We used to get a two seventy-four, which is a program improvement, that has been taken, it was cut last year by about two-thirds. This year, the state is not offering that again. Our two forty grant is about six hundred and eighty thousand two hundred and nine. Did I get that right? I think that's right. And that money primarily goes to some of the private school tuitions that we pay, in addition to autism specialists, which we're required to have on consult with our, with our school district. Professional development specialized for some of our teachers who are in our sub-separate programs or some of our related service providers. I don't have a grant, would mean.
Nurse.
Yeah.
Sixteen thousand.
Yeah.
In-home supplemental service program supplies can be here to.
Yeah, and we do have some students that require in-home applied behavior analysis who have autism, so that money is parked inside of the grant as well.
So this, this figure here of the two million five is part, part of the, only part of the expenses.
Only part of the expenses, yeah, and then we also have the server breaker money that, that we can utilize if we need to, that can offset some of that. We also have two fairly small preschool-related grants. One is kind of the preschool mirror of the two forty grant, which is the two sixty-two early education grant. That's about seventeen thousand dollars, and it pretty much covers our coordinator for the preschool. That's, that's her stipend, she's her salary for, for being the director of preschool. And the two ninety-eight is that program improvement for preschool, but again, if they're not releasing the two seventy-four, I highly doubt they're releasing the two ninety-eight this year. So right now, we're working off of two grants that are a little under seven hundred thousand in total to offset expenses. Did I answer your questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
How were we able to save so much on the tuition plan to collaboratives?
So we had a lot of movement this year. We had some, quite a few students that were able to step down from collaboratives into our schools with some of really great success. And, you know, unfortunately, we would have had a lot more savings, but we had a few students either become worse in their medical condition or become worse in their psychiatric diagnoses and need to move to a higher level of service, so that kind of is where we had that hundred thousand dollar swing with private and residential, and the big dip with collaborative. So some of those kids we had at collaborative and needed to up the service to a more specialized school. So that's where you see the drop in the collaborative and the increase in the private.
And that's all, that's all buy-in and parents and all that.
Oh, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. But I mean, just an example, two students have saved us three hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Because it's just transportation, outside services, tuition, specialized programs. If, but it's, it's a lot, and it's every day.
Yeah.
It's every day, and we started the transition for both of them in January of last year.
Do any of them go kind of mainstream, or do we just?
They're pretty specialized. We do, I do have one that we moved from a collaborative school, actually, no, it wasn't a collaborative, it was Tyrods. We moved one student from a private seven sixty-six school into the high school, phenomenal transition. So, and right into, just to check in in our therapeutic learning center and out into the general population. The other two are very specialized, specific, and a lot of services and training need to be put in place, but the savings is still astronomical. And the parents are very happy.
Yeah, good.
That's good.
Yeah, and so what we've also seen this year, we've had a number of move-ins from out-of-district, or from other schools where B C F students being brought in along, you know, and we planned for students coming back from out-of-district. What we didn't plan for, wouldn't know about other students coming to us. So we've seen an overload in some of our classes, which has caused us to need to add additional staffing. So this year alone, we've added four paraprofessionals at the high school, we're in the process of adding, we got in two, we're in the process of adding two more, and then one's retired, so we'll be three added. And we've added a teacher at the high school, we'd like to add another one, but we've been able to absorb that cost because of the savings that we've had in bringing people back. And I think when you look at Melissa's request for the special ed, certainly, everything here is very definitely needed, and if possible, we may put some things in place this year. We're waiting to see where we're at financially, to see if we can make those, make that work, just because what we don't want to do is we have some really, really nice balances going on in our classes right now, or not having the explosive behavior, or the kids moving out. Whenever we get someone new, we're really looking, how does that affect what's going on now? We are just having a student come in to the middle school from California, actually, and we're, we're going to take a very hard look at what will this do to the dynamics in that classroom, and do we need to add support?
And we just got another one today, a move-in from April, someplace up north. So we have another family that just moved here with another middle school student with another large set of needs. So it's, it's pretty much every day.
There's a pre-K that, I mean.
Yeah, I heard that one, too.
A pre-K man, too, with the, just the mom, I guess.
I have a question about pre-K.
How are you, there's fifty pre-K that need?
That's actually my question right here.
How are you, the kids, four years old? How do you determine?
If them are on IEPs, so sixty percent.
Sixty percent, but that's what the preschool's set up for, especially.
So that's what I'm saying, is it early intervention?
Right, so what's.
So you see fifteen percent in kindergarten, so we're moving.
No, so what happens is we get fed by early intervention, and we're required by the state to do trial lines. So we have to go out and look for students who need to be tested. So they're getting tested within preschool, and what's happening is they're coming in, a lot of them, with things that are just developmental and really environmental. So they're getting identified by early intervention, because they might be hyper, they might not be able to sit still in a classroom, or maintain their impulsivity, or they might have some articulation issues for speech, or some pencil grasp issues. And so early intervention identifies them and sends them to us. Our job is to make sure that we give them the tools they need to be able to be successful in the classroom, and then reassess what they need to be successful academically, so that's kind of what that preschool time is for. So you see the numbers coming in the way up here, and then they start to go down.
So realistically, people, not graduate from IEP, but realistically, kids come off of IEPs, they go into higher grades.
Yes, so statistically with the pre-
Yes, so statistically with the preschool, I would say sixty percent of those students who have an I E P in preschool will not have one when they leave preschool out. Because we've remedied whatever delay they have and gotten them up to where they need to be to start into the kindergarten.
Yeah, so you break down the D C's, it's like sixty percent pre-K, fifteen for kindergarten, twenty-five percent for.
Well, the thing about pre-K too is that they're, they're sometimes for more than one year. So you can't do it like, you couldn't take that number and then think it's gonna just move into K? Because some of them stay longer, right? So to get to where they're at. Cause they start at three, they'll start at three, right? They're not ready for kindergarten until five. So you've got this, you can't necessarily take those numbers and then match them up.
Okay. They don't automatically all move into kindergarten next year?
No, no, no.
You know, and the other thing, we've, we have some data from our kindergarten about students that went to preschool and we're honing it into students that went to our preschool versus others. And we see significant, um, skills from students that attended preschool than students that did not. And it's just, it's dramatic, I'm sure.
Well, what's very interesting about kindergarten is you've got, you've got four different kinds of students entering. You have those that went to our preschool, those that went to a private preschool, those that went to daycare, and those that had no school. None, right? So within that mix, you have all of those different things to consider, which is why we're looking at a really, uh, different, uh, screening tool, which is what Bethany brought up in her presentation, right? And try to match that into what we're trying to gather when they walk through the door so that we know where they are prior to that. And we do have some data that we gathered last year from our preschool, which is significant, what they know as a result of the strategies that we're giving them, in literacy at least, right? And then what other kids don't know, it seems that this year's kindergarten, there are the kids that know and the kids that don't know. There's this real, uh, divide, but because we have the tools, we can identify and then get to work on what we need to do.
And we also have a waiting list for kids from preschool. We just don't have enough spaces. So we're thinking about if we could create two more preschool up classes, where could we locate them? Because it couldn't be at D C's, but it would have to be more of a regular ed type of school.
Pre-C, the peer, so the peers K?
Yeah.
On a sliding scale, he's not.
Not the special ed.
But, but the I E Ps, yeah, not K. I mean, that way.
That's a program that they want to get in two hours. Well, everybody should want to get into our programs. All the way across the board. Here you go. I have a question. Do you have the breakdown for my Morris middle and high school by grade level like you did for D C's?
The only reason why I had to D C's that way is for whatever reason, I could not pull the preschool out. They gave it to me as a whole, and Dr. Shaver had asked me to do it separately. So the only way I could break it down was to do it by grade like that. So I do not have it, I can get it to you, but I think it looks like Andrea might have it.
Hold on.
It, it just, the system wanted to group the preschool in with the rest of D C's and I wanted a quick picture of what the preschool looked like, so I had to do it by grade.
Can I ask you a question while we're doing that?
Sure.
All right. So, I mean, we're kind of gearing up to a discussion on preschool, but in, in the, how, how many? We're legally obligated to provide preschool, right, in some certain, certain? Like, how many students would you say are legally required right now to have a preschool?
Fifty.
Fifty.
And we've got a couple of, yeah, and we've got a couple that are kind of hovering in the wings. Plus, well, every month, we get a new batch from, right, et cetera.
Yeah, and I've been, uh, just because, you know, everyone's, you go on some of these comments sections, where they do a school and they're saying, you know, that it's like extravagance and opulence that we're doing preschool. You know, and it's like, number one, it's, it is school too. Number two, we're required, you know, so I just wanted someone else besides me to say that.
Well, those people obviously don't know, that's why I said they don't.
They don't, but, but.
It's a special education piece more so because we're not, in Massachusetts, we're legally not required to educate a child until, up until, what is it, four point five, four point nine? However, because it's a special education student, two point nine is what we start. So I've gotta take them, whether they're identified by E I or they're identified by us, we have to start that process. So I, in order for me to run an integrated preschool model, which is what all the research shows is the most effective model, I then have to have peers to go with. I can't just run a solid special education preschool without having those peer, a peer group that's equal. Um, to, so I have to have one more peer than I do students on I E P in order for it to be an integrated classroom by definition. So, yeah, I mean, we're not legally obligated to provide preschool to students who don't have an I E P, but in order to run an integrated model, we need to have the availability to have peers in.
One, yeah, right.
Yeah, so.
What do you screen them?
We screen at four different times a year. And I've got, I don't have that information on me right now, but we also do home visits. So our preschool coordinator goes into the home throughout the year and to preschools.
But this is the sort of thing where parents are soliciting you, right? Saying, listen, my kid needs help, you know?
Well, not always, because we run screenings four times a year. And when we do the public screenings, we put it out on Where Happens Matters, we put it in the paper. That's what we're legally obligated to do. And then parents set up appointment times and they come. Um, some of them come to apply as a peer, and then we go, ooh, wait a minute, I think maybe we need to do an evaluation. Some of them come because they know something, it doesn't, you know, feels a little off and they think they want help in identifying what that is. So it's not all these parents pick up the bone and call and say, you know, my child doesn't seem like they're developing the right way.
I'm trying to think back to one of the kids, like, three years old.
We get fed from Head Start, we get fed from Easter Seals, it depends on the type of disability, um, they come from different places.
You're in pediatricians also?
Pediatricians, we reach out to pediatricians, all the local preschools. Um, and then we do the, the universal screenings and then we have, we do home visits on an individual basis or visits to preschools to coordinate with them if they do the referral. It's a lot of work, like preschool. I'm guessing some of y'all will be coming back and asking me for a full-time preschool coordinator in the future.
I have, um, middle school, so this year in fifth grade, the total number of special ed, forty in sixth grade, forty-four and seventh grade, forty-five. Next year, we're anticipating fifty in grade five, forty in grade six, and forty-four in grade seven. And I can't, my hands on my toe. But I can get to the weight of it.
Fifty, maybe.
Or we could estimate next year, maybe. Any questions?
Um, I have a question. I just wanted, um, I've said this to you before, that it is wonderful when we're able to save money on out-of-district tuition, but it's important to me anyway that we're able to put money back in to support because obviously, there are students coming back with needs. There are already students in our schools with needs, so I don't wanna compromise one for the other, I hope so. Um, I know we always, we talk about the, the old, when you say the overall savings, is that just tuition or is that?
That's, so the savings that's reflected on the screen time by proposal is straight tuition right now, but I'm able to take that savings and basically with the other cuts we've made just on like little line items, um, I'm able to add staff back. So that's, my goal is to make sure that we're set up for success and our students have everything that they need to be successful. So in the savings that I've had in the first year that I was, I was here, we were able to add some positions and do some training for our staff, which was amazing that we wouldn't have been able, wouldn't have the funding for. Um, we were able to add that trauma specialist, we were able to make the B C, the other B C P a full-time, which she wasn't before. And it really just kind of is figuring out the way to win and cutting an area that are more expensive, building our own capacity is pretty much where the savings is coming from. You say, go to pick, pick your bells, but we, we turned around and we turned the savings back and it's for the staff.
Okay, good.
We're not using, we're not using it for anything else.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, and we certainly don't have extra staff, so anytime we increase that population.
I think the budget cuts last year were rough staff-wise for us. Um, so we're right now kind of, everybody's putting in an extra, you know, mile to get us through it, but it's not ideal. So I think with the increases that I'm asking for, it, it makes it back to even playing field where it is ideal. Plus, we've been able to add some really great supports.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Any else?
Are we early?
Oh, eight minutes or so.
We made up time.
We did make up time.
He's the biggest star.
No kidding.
He's usually not the one. Yeah, he's usually not the one.
Okay, so while we're waiting, if I could just do, um, just a little bit of transportation and we'll be following the transportation later, I mean, in more detail at a different time. What I'm gonna hand out to you is just the what we've saved and what we anticipate saving this year versus what from last year. So when we look at the out-of-district number, we've saved two hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars in out-of-district savings in transportation alone. And so I listed the reasons why. So we have three students that returned to, to district, we have three graduate, we have three that we're now transporting in that, if you remember, we purchased four, well, leased on four vans. And part of that would be that we could also then pick up the transportation of students and then one student enrolled in a different school. We've reduced runs, total of three, for savings of forty thousand dollars. There was a collection of bus fees, um, a little less than what we anticipated for twenty thousand. So our total anticipated savings this year in transportation, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. We had kind of targeted in our discussion, um, last year of approximately a hundred and seventy. So we're over our savings, so we're very happy about that. Again, the out-of-district could change a little bit depending on who moves in and we have to transport out.
Are you recording, like, foster children?
This is, this is different. Are we saving on foster kids?
No, you mentioned like three students returned to district. Savings of seventy-six thousand dollars.
Right, cause out-of-district came back in.
We don't have to transport them anymore to the.
To the school.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, you know, a couple of areas that we're watching closely, um, McKinney-Bentham with our homeless students. We're transporting, it seems like we have a number of homeless students this year on a regular basis. We're finding great difficulty in finding services to transport, so we're having to go out. Even if we can find out-of-district, there's just nobody out there that's, everybody's having this difficulty. One of the questions that we've explored is if we would purchase additional vehicles, could this alleviate some of the problems or would bring back more tuition, um, money? Because we're not spending for contract services. And right now, we just don't have the staff that would allow us to do that. Um, we have one or two subs with transportation and we advertise constantly and we just have not been able to keep a pool of subs. So that's kind of where we're at on transportation. Um, I will be having a list of buses for you and what the, um, the update, I just, and I'll be providing the copies for them.
So, so the last two items, reduction in runs in bus fees, that was a result of us now, you know, redoing transportation at the end of the budget last year. So we were looking to save a hundred and seventy thousand bucks, but we're saving about sixty, we're saving sixty thousand bucks. We're, we're, we're coming up with a hundred and ten.
Because I'm saving, oh, the hundred and ten. Well, we're including the out-of-district savings because that was not something that we had included.
Yeah, and had, had that not happened, we'd be in trouble.
Yes, we would.
Yeah.
And part of it was, you know, we knew that if we purchased or leased on the vans, that would also help us. We didn't have a figure for that. So we're very happy that we're able to now transport three of ours because that gives us a ninety thousand dollar savings.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Maureen's gonna talk a little bit about beyond school time as well as D L L. Jane had an out-of-district commitment, so she's filling in and playing a role.
Okay, so we'll start with Jane first, um, and she spends very bright for not being able to join me today. Um, but you all have the, um, W C A S pass information?
Thank you.
Maybe we'll.
No.
We have all the others. Okay, so we start with D L L.
Is it alternative school? Is it, is it in here, right?
It's probably go on the.
Alternative schools?
Okay, good.
It's the first.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, here. It's the first tab.
Just says the supplies, the copier lease information, um, and some contracted services information for the past program. I don't know if there are any questions on this program that I can answer.
She didn't have any change to the question.
Neither Jane or I have changes.
No changes.
Okay.
Next year, it's the same.
So I just have one question, so I didn't, you know, somebody else had a question sitting there. Heating and utilities, is that for distillery, for the use of distillery by the past program?
Yes, would be.
Okay.
Cause we're charged by the town for some of this.
Okay.
So that's not in kind?
Some of it is in kind and others we have to come up with some money.
So the next page says that there's no copier. At present, there's no copier, it's left at the middle school. There is one, I believe, in rural across from student services. So what is that? Did it need one?
Right now, there needs, it's the beyond school time.
It is.
Okay, so we're just, and everyone okay with that?
Yeah. Is there, um, income associated with this from out-of-district?
There is.
Correct.
This tuition.
Finance.
So there is.
There was, there was a bigger picture.
Which is why you don't see any salaries here.
Okay.
Um, cause it's funded through.
So the, all the out-of-district students that come here will pay per course?
They pay for the staff to teach them? The salaries of the staff?
And even though, so the students pay, not the other districts?
Right, right. Well, if they're here on a full-time basis, then they're a school choice student and we bill the other district. And we receive that, that goes into our school choice fund. I, I believe we're at about forty-eight school, no, total. Here, I'd have to go back and just check. And so what that does, it offsets the salaries and the cost of running this program. The other thing is, there was a meeting yesterday, I believe, was it, or next? To bring in a jobs certification program for our night school students beginning in January. Um, we're also looking at building a summer program to offer an afternoon or evening program for our students that need alternative school. And in the, we follow the traditional calendar and have not run a summer program. We're looking to see what interest there would be to run a summer adult program. And if we do so, we may open it up to people twenty-two and older to see if there's a need there as well. If that would be the case, then it would be paid by the individual because there's no school that we would be able to build for classes.
Yeah, so we're excited about that meeting, that's next Wednesday morning, about ten o'clock, ten thirty, we're meeting here. Um, and then, as Dr. Shaver had said, the school choice will pay for full-time students, so that's considered three classes or more. So there are some students who only take one class, maybe they just need an English class to recover some credits or math, so they pay, if it's less than three classes, then they pay individually per class.
If you were to open up to the. If you were to open up to the summer, would this allow students who are, you know, maybe a grade behind to be able to kind of catch back up? And who knows, maybe let's get back on track to graduate, graduate with their class?
Yes, that's exactly, that's partly intent, is for the recovering piece in the summertime.
It's an amazing opportunity for some of these kids. And it'll.
Absolutely.
So is it true that the tuitions or the, that you collect pay for the salaries and then some?
You know, there's money extra in school choi, in the, uh, school choice account. Part of that's used to offset the, um, salary for the, uh, our H R person. In the past, we've used it to help offset the salary for the school resource officer and any other incidental expenses that were not.
District costs.
Yes, district. And, and in the school, the alternative school, we also have security here. Actually, it's a retired state police officer and all the salaries are paid through that fund.
And do these expenses reflect expenses for the dayton alternative school and the high school? Or is that all part of a different budget?
Um, that's really part of Scott's budget. If there are certain needs, then it can come out of this budget, but we don't, uh, separate one classroom or evening or. Can he put it on one presentation?
So it's not a school within a school over there?
Well, it is kind of, but, but not.
We're always trying to increase that number too and increase the revenue that we're bringing in. Um, so we have a lot of community business partners who'll come in and they'll give, um, some presentations and they take our flyers and they give them to students and families who they think might be interested. As a matter of fact, I have someone coming on Thursday night. It's, um, Emily from the Plymouth County Federal Teachers Credit Union. Um, and so she's doing a financial literacy piece with some of the students. Um, they're letting the math students know to come in later this month and maybe get some extra, um, points and extra credit by attending that, and it's real world skills for them, so. And it's great, nice business, um, connection to community partnership connection. Um, then later on, we, um, this year, we will have some resume writing and interviewing skills. A workshop again, it'll be on Thursday, so not a traditional night that they have class, but they can come in, they can get some extra credit, uh, and then get those real world skills with an expert.
Who do you have, who are you bringing in for those?
So that one is actually a new teacher, it's the new deputy teacher, Joe Franco. And I don't know if you've met him, but he's fantastic, he's tremendous, and comes from the business world. And so his former job, um, as a corp, was a corporate trainer. And he used to lead workshops internationally in resume writing, interview skills, what to do, what not to do. And he actually offered to come in and, and give his time and, and teach our kids these skills.
So I, I met Mr. Franco during the open house and he is awesome, yeah, he really is.
Fantastic, and we're really excited about this. We can't get him in soon enough because he's just, he's terrific, yeah. Really engaging.
We need him. We really do.
Yeah, I think the students are gonna really just love it, and he has so much to offer.
He's, he's very, very passionate about the, what he's doing. He used to be a, like, really up there in, uh, target, you know?
Big, big international job, yeah.
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 That's right. So, anything else on? And then the second one just came around, and that is the, um, English Language Global Ed line. And this is, um, predominantly for our English learners. We have, um, thirty-nine students in the program right now. That's thirty-one current active P L's English learners and eight former English learners who still have to be monitored by law, uh, by state federal law. You still have to have them in your enrollment and monitor them, um, every semester, so a total of thirty-nine. So this accounts for their, the teachers, we have two teachers, we have, um, Joe Marcus and Anarika. And their salaries are on here as well as, um, your professional development materials. And, um, they do some home visits as well, which is a nice piece that we added in, um, a couple of years ago. Our families really, um, respond well to that. And a lot of families in this particular population, due to some, um, cultural issues as well as transportation issues, they don't come in for parent conferences. Um, but we'll welcome the teachers into their home on their tour. So we put in, um, a little piece for the home visit and that has been remarkably well received. They just love that, so, so we're excited to continue that, but no changes this year.
Questions?
Questions for all?
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, oh, um, just, you had mentioned in one of the meetings, something about, um, potentially getting upwards of five hundred thousand dollars from the, um, I think their exchange program or something.
Yeah.
How's, how's that working out?
So it's thirteen thousand is the cost of per pupil expenditure.
Yeah.
So this year, we got eight students and this was just our, well, last year was our pilot year, but this is our first year of implementation, fully implementation with eight students, so that's almost a hundred grand. So we're hoping to get a partnership who wants to give us a significant amount of students. They're also talking about, um, the potential of looking into properties around here that they would house those students because certainly we can't, well, I don't know about the likelihood of finding, um, you know, that many host families. And on a honest game, the host families is the preferred model, um, for, um, increasing intercultural confidence. It is a host family that has the highest, um, sort of rate of return for that. But, um, we would be able to likely do that, we'll hope as many as we can in our own, quote, with our own host families. But they're also looking into purchasing a property where they would have, um, international students. So that's down the road, again, that's our long-term plan.
Right.
But that's what we're looking at for numbers. We have people who really want to partner with us, they love the I V program at high school, they love the sports, they love all that we have to offer and wear him, they love wearing high school. And we're, um, you know, we're always coming up as a public school district with a really excellent price point in comparison to these private schools who are charging double and triple the amount for less of an education or the same of an education, amount of education, so.
Less, I say.
I say less too, I say less too. Uh, I didn't want to put them down, but yeah, so there, I mean, for what you get for your dollar, this is what, these are what, these, these parents are savvy and they're looking for the best value for their dollar, and I think we're it. So, yeah, so lots of talks about potential students for next year. And then even the following year, we have people who want to, they're not there yet, um, age-wise. They want to put down money to reserve themselves a spot for the following year. So that, it's generated a huge amount of interest in such a short time. We just got our C D certification not that long ago. It's already really generated so much interest.
I met some of those principals from.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, they were so impressed with what our school had to offer.
I was impressed at the presentation, like, seeing it all together.
Correct. It was just wild. It was amazing.
I just got an email right before I came down, I was up there typing, and then I got a call from Jen Spelly, said they're ready for you. I thought, oh, oh, they won't be ready till noon or afterwards, no, they're ready, come down. Um, but it was from a Chinese principal and they want to partner with us for next year. I haven't even had time to talk to the superintendent about it because they literally just got that email. Um, and he said, and I also have a colleague who wants to partner with you as well. So, there's a lot of buzz about it and a lot of, you know, a lot of interest has been generated. And again, I think it's the value of the education and the programming that we offer, the diverse program, and then also the price point.
We did a video, when was it, this summer, it was hot, it was one of those really hot days. We were at Deacon's and.
Oh, yes.
We, uh.
That was hot.
It was geared for the preschool. And so, they used the video and showed it, and we have now forty principals, is it forty? Four?
Four, yeah.
Four, four, I knew there was a four someplace. Um, four principals coming in November to tour the school to see what we're doing in preschool, um, just as a result, so.
Principals from where?
China.
Is it generally seniors in high school who come for the whole year?
Generally, but not always. I mean, we, I'd say we have, so, it's not even, it's only, it's less than half this year who are seniors. And the rest are, we have Russian sophomores, juniors.
Yeah.
So some, you, you, we think that that, we thought that that's where they're going to be looking for that diploma. And some certainly are, they're looking for a U S diploma. Um, like, some students just want to come and they want to get that year and have that American high school experience and, you know, get a good quality education and be involved in the sports team and the athletic department at the high school has been tremendous, um, as far as communication and the willingness and openness and, um, the teammates on, you know, all of our kids are in sports, some sports team. The teammates have just been so accepting and erased our international students. And they've joined clubs, and we have kids in DECA and in the Global Ambassadors and in Key Club. And so they've just really jumped right in and become part of the, they've become Vikings.
Yeah, that's right, I noticed one of them was in the Viking Theater Club there, he did a bunch of things, but, uh, he had the language barrier, he still, he still killed it, you know, he was great.
You're talking about Paul?
Yeah.
Paul hasn't left. Paul is still here. Did I tell you this, I don't know, I told somebody.
This is what?
Well, he's in college now. But he's still, just like, he's all around. So I don't know, I was telling somebody, um, I, so I do races every month, so I, I was just doing a race of that one in Middleborough. When I crossed the finish line, the very first face I see when I cross the finish line, I think maybe it was you that I, was Paul. And I, I was confused because it was October and where, what's he do, or September, whatever, and what's he doing here? And he's like, oh, just here with the palings. And then there's Trig, another one of our exchange students, he had just crossed the finish, well, actually, they had crossed it long before I did it. But there they were, one happy family, the palings, all the paling boys, Paul and Trig, all there, one happy family. Um, but yeah, no, Paul is still around.
I think that really says a lot about our community and our school community that we welcome. I think that really does.
I would have some really nice, lovely people here.
People, we do.
Well, Paul first came to us on a summer program. So we had forty-three Chinese students, um, come to us for two weeks in summer, they stayed at Mass Maritime, they were involved in care. We ran a five K with them at the, uh, canal, we did some activ, evening activities, potluck suppers at the, um, at the dorms at Mass Maritime and then game night. Paul loved it so much from that experience, he wanted to come back. He did during that vacation, loved it so much, he wanted to spend the year. So once they get here, I think, um, they, they want to stay. And actually, one of our students who's coming next year, Ryan, was, is also from an exchange program. He came here last February. He asked for an interview, we interviewed him last February, and he's already applied and put down his deposit for next year. So this is all, yeah, I know. So what they're doing at the high school too, I think, is really impressing these students, the teachers, um, what they're offering the students because they're not going to want to come here if they don't, if they don't feel welcome, is the bottom line. So the fact that they're coming here, they're getting that welcome feeling, and they get that sense of community in just this short amount of time and want to come back and spend a year, I think speaks to all of this.
But it's not only from China, we have students from Norway, Brazil, Spain.
Spain, Netherlands, yeah.
Is, is the rate the same, thirteen thousand?
Thirteen thousand, yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, oh, it's the same, yeah.
Per pupil, sorry.
Yeah, it's set by.
It's set by us.
Yes.
All right.
By us.
The range.
Oh, no, yeah, it's all, yeah, and that's one thing that they all remark on too, is, are you sure thirteen thousand U S D?
Yeah.
Because usually, they're used to hearing double that because private schools, they're not, their rate is not set by the government, so they can charge whatever they want, and they do, so.
So impressed with the number.
I know, I tell you every time I see you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, that gives you an overview of the various departments. Um, what we'd like to follow up with would be then central office or district office. And we'll be doing that when we have our budget workshop, so we can pull everything together. Um, we'll include transportation at that point with it and technology.
And when you say budget workshop, you mean the workshop on the six?
December six.
Yes, yeah. Um, because we also have a student committee, uh, workshop meeting on November nineteenth.
Mm-hmm.
Around budget priorities.
So we can do it there too.
Seventeen? Fifteen? I'll have to confirm this, yeah, I can say, yeah.
So between now and then, if there are items that you have questions on and you would like, uh, more clarification, please get it for us and we will make sure that we have those answers for you at the, for the next workshop meeting. Now, do you want to, do you want to look at the.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Um, well, no, Mike and Joseph do, but I don't. Sorry, at the very front.
Sorry.
Of, of your work, there's a, it just says graph budget planning, it's kind of my running worksheet and kind of show what, what it's looked like in the past. So it, it will go through and tell you basic role of cost, so that's basically the contractual obligations that we have and, and what that cost is. It's, it's one point one million just, just to move forward with what we're obligated to, to do. If you're underneath that, there's some staffing needs to maintain, class size, which Bethany talked about, we need a grade two. Further down, we need two, for our limited I V teachers. And then all the staff that Melissa talked about, um, the point two team chairs and sped teachers are listed there for the total. If you drop all the way to the bottom, it will show you, um, we need a six point six two percent increase just to absorb all that and move forward. It's a one point nine million dollar, um, increase on the next.
So, uh, the, of the one point, um, nine, one point one is for certain, that's contractual?
Yes.
The rest is not contractual, it's, it's anticipated or requested.
Correct, it's either, you know, main, needs to maintain class size or trying to move the district forward, um. But up top, it's the have to have, we don't, we don't have an option of choosing that or not. So, and just that one point one, um, if you flip to, um, there should be another page behind it that just says F Y twenty level services, which I kind of summarized. So, just to roll across, about four percent increase. If you add all the additional staffing that was requested, it's another one point three percent increase. And then the increase to supply some materials, um, district-wide from everyone, um, was another three sixty-five, so that's another one point six increase, and that's what makes up that six point two percent increase overall and to addition of six F T Es.
Is, uh, what about the benefits and so forth? Is that's, that's, is that salary or is that salary plus anticipated, uh, any of those benefits that are based on, on salary?
Well, most of our benefits are paid to the town.
Through, through the town, okay, that's just, sorry, clarifying, that's, that's just salary, not the Tommy's.
Correct, it's not the charity stuff. And on the next page, this is summary.
Can I ask a quick question? Um, in your list, I don't see Scott's requests.
There were several late adds yesterday, so they may not be here.
Okay.
Because this is a moving document.
Oh, okay, okay.
Like, I think the dean, there's, there's no dean for mine.
Right, I was gonna say. And he has for, this is for specialized.
So some of them.
Side director.
Yeah.
And then plenty five of the director, and then, yeah, the, the.
So, I mean, we can certainly add those. So between now and the budget, the workshop for, all right.
Oh, yeah, this is a moving document, you know, it's a couple of months old. So the one point nine doesn't, some of it was requested by principals, but not all, is that true?
Correct. Yes. And then the next page is just a summary from each, from each department that we heard from today and what their sa, overall savings were, um.
So I think like on, uh, on a high school, what you have on that page and what is on the, under the tab, the, the dollar amounts are not the same.
Right, because the tabs are from the old.
From.
From, from our initial meeting.
So this is the, this is the more up, most recent.
Yeah. Um, also in there, um, I did a per pupil comparison, I don't know if anyone is interested in that, I mean, I'm always interested in that. And I, I'm not sure which districts we compare to, so I, I grabbed a few, like, Born and Carver, Middleborough Sandwich, and then this way having the state average to kind of give you an idea of where we are of per pupil based on the state's views. They don't break it down by spend regular anymore, um, but that gives you an idea of where we are in comparison to the other, at least surrounding towns. It may not necessarily be a comparative scale.
The big difference with our district is our percentage of special education compared to other districts' percentages, I think.
This percentage of that, and percentage of free reduce is huge. We don't generate a lot of income because we can't charge.
Correct.
So we're not generating it in some of the departments where we can really use it. So, I mean, these documents and this enrollment information here as well, these documents. So, I mean, these documents and this enrollment information here as well, these documents will, will change obviously because they're moving.
So, all right, fifteen, eight, oh, six. How much, how much are we giving from Chevron seventy?
I don't know, but I lost it off my head.
Nine or eleven, I always forget.
Right, I think one year it was nine, one year it was eleven, I think you're right. One year it was eleven, one year it was eleven. That's it really, in the, for the book for now until our next meeting. Just kind of, it's a lot of information to look at. We're going to try to have it openly. They justify school, per pupil expenditure by school, just didn't have enough time to pull that together. But obviously that on the next, in the next round of meetings.
Is that, is that a meaningful number? Is that to compare? Because at every level, isn't there a different level of education elementary and all of that?
You mean the cost per pupil?
Yes.
Yeah, I would, I mean, it's a good comparison to look at overall to see where you sit in it, but there are so many different things that they don't take into consideration. They just throw the numbers in a pile and averages. So it's good to see that we're not completely under.
Right.
You know what I mean? Like, we're at ten thousand and then Carver's at fifteen.
Oh, that number too, but even comparing our own numbers, so, yes, I agree.
I mean, it's good to know.
A lot of mark at least.
Right. And, yeah, you're, you're right, I mean, it's, to look at the number comparatively with the other districts is probably a good way to look at it, but to look at that true number.
It doesn't give you a whole lot.
It doesn't include everything, right? Every district, correct, so.
So if you go to the Desi website, that you look at with the DART analysis, it's like a, they lump you in with comparable districts. I haven't looked in a while, but the last time I looked at the Middleborough was, we were lumped into the Middleborough. So that would be a half, half of an apple's to apples comparison, sort of, you know?
Okay. Yeah, you're right about that.
There's a group of schools that are.
Maybe like four or five. I think it was like demographics and funding and all that stuff, you know?
Right, yeah, no, I've looked at it.
So I don't know if you have any, any questions.
Thank you for putting this down. That gives us a lot of things we can refer back to if you have questions.
Well, I mean, I like the worksheet because it's a, it's a moving document, so I can add, take away and the, the bottom number will continue to change percent-wise and dollar-wise. What do I need, what percent do I need? And I think on the second, second page behind that, there's a little tab that says, means probably nothing to, to look at. But if, you know, if we were given a half a percent, it shows what we would have to come up with, what we have to cut. Right.
That's an interesting way to look at it.
Well, cutting is your ballpark, you know, so we're looking for one point nine, which is, I didn't go that far on the list. So if we get a two percent, a two percent, we're looking at, you know, a reduction of one point three million. Anything else?
So, yeah, this is great, like this will be on the website at some point, because there's a ton of information.
I think, is it, you, we can put it on the website.
Yeah.
But then it's going to change.
Well, no, but this.
That's the problem.
No, right, but this is the meeting as of today, so it's a council. So you may have a look at today's meeting and follow the information at home. Or if you're at our finance committee and want to look at the video and see what people are talking about, it's all here, you know?
I think we'll get, we'll date it and put budgets such, and then we'll just have to keep a running log of how we update so everyone will know that there's a progressive change.
Yeah.
Now, do you want the, that worksheet up there as well? Well, I mean, typically, in the past, I haven't put that up there because it lists, it's listing positions that probably may or may not be there. That's what I call.
Good big people? Yeah, I mean, you might want to look names.
No, there's no, no names.
Oh, positions.
Just the positions.
We'll go through it.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Can I ask a clarification on where the school planning meeting will be held on person?
Um, the fifteenth is at the middle school auditorium.
Okay.
Yeah. Is there any guests in practice? Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn if anyone has any other questions?
Motion.
Somebody on the school committee.
So.
Second, all those in favor?